Hello.
Hey, good morning, afternoon.
How are you?
One of those times.
Yeah, I wanted to see if I could possibly be co-host so we could record this for the channel.
I will see if I can promote you. Hang on just a second.
How are you, by the way? Sorry.
I'm fine, my thanks. May co-host. You are a co-host.
Thank you.
Pam, would you like to be a co-host? Why not? Pam is a co-host. You can be a co-host. You can be a co... That's my best offer. Well, Palagi is promoted to co-host, or is a panelist, excuse me. Oops, we are recording at the moment. I need to pause just for a second. I almost feel like an NPR radio host. Pam, if you have a text number for our absent...
Ah, yes, I have...
Board members?
Two of them. Reggie's having... He's gonna switch to another computer. Craig has not answered me and...
Checking my email, I do not see any other...
No, because I heard from some of them today, so...
I see Mr. Pena. And I'm promoting him. Mr. Chairman, I believe we now have Quam with three people.
We do.
Well, I can't pick up my email on my new phone.
Shall we wait, Mr. May, shall we wait maybe one or two more minutes for... Generally Larry is pretty dependable if he's not able to attend.
There's Reggie.
Oh.
And Larry may be... Let's give Larry one or two more minutes. He shows he... Pretty dependable. If he doesn't show, he usually notifies ahead.
Larry, if you are using an alias, if you could raise your hand, I can unmute you or promote you to panelist. Sometimes we use our kids... There he is. Full house, Mr. Chairman.
Now we have him. See that?
Oh, wait a minute. I lost my... Oh, there they are. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, you may begin with your...
Opening statement?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, good evening to everyone. This is a prepared opening statement that I'm about to read. I'm calling this October the 6th, 2020 meeting of the Brockton Planning Boards of Order. My name is Bob Palagi, and I am the Chair of the Board. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, relating to the 2020 Novell Corona outbreak emergency. The October 6th, 2020 public meeting of the Brockton Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the Board, to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. For those of you joining us by phone who want to ask a question, press star nine to raise your hand. Copy of the recording and transcript will be posted to the city's webpage within 72 hours. All votes will be done via a roll call to ensure count accuracy. A quorum call, Board members, please respond in the affirmative to indicate your attendance at this meeting. Bob Palagi here. Craig Pena.
Here.
Reggie Thomas.
Here.
Tony Gonzalez.
Here.
Larry Hassan.
Here.
With five members voting in the affirmative, I declare that we have a forum. I should say voting in attendance. Again, once again, this meeting is being recorded. Okay, let's just quickly go down the elements of tonight's public hearing. The zoning, the planning board meeting. The first agenda item is a permission to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's properly at 912 Crescent Street. It was denied on July the 14th, 2020. The applicant is KG Collectives. Second agenda item is permission to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's properly at 1208 Montello Street. The denial was February the 11th of 2020. The applicant was Peter Harrison, and the representative is J.K. Holmgren Engineering. The third agenda item is site plan approval. That's properly at 702 North Montello Street. The applicant is Carousel LLC. It's a retail marijuana proposal. Representative is Ian Woods. The fourth agenda item is a preliminary subdivision. It's a six-lot residential subdivision at 134 Armiston Street. The owner representative is... Let's see, the owner is Robert Kane, and the representative is Attorney James Burke. I've been informed that that has been continued. Fifth agenda item is a preliminary subdivision. It's a two-lot residential subdivision that 74 plots 18 Market in Market Street and one plots, plot 1 minus 4 Copland Street. It's Juan Rochez, I believe, is the applicant, and Land Surveys is the representative. And the sixth agenda item is a 18-lot residential definitive subdivision. Properly is on map 37. It's plots 4, 6, and 18 Augusta Avenue and plot 36 Prospect Street. The owner is Frederick Kepchie, and the representative is Curly and handsome surveyors. Seventh agenda item is a definitive subdivision, two-lot residential subdivision at 678 E Street. Let's see. Owner is Benjamin Carroll. And the engineer is Mundan, the engineer is Mundan Engineering. That is, that item has been continued to November the 4th, 2020. Last agenda item is a definitive subdivision. It's all lot residential subdivision, plot 2, Baggeria Avenue. The owner representative is Silver Engineering. That also is, that has been continued to December the 1st, 2020 meeting. All right. Well, without further ado, again, first agenda item.
I'm sorry, one point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I do want to point out that the 134 Armisted Street subdivision, preliminary subdivision, is continued to November 4th. You had given the date on the other two continuances, but you didn't give the date on that one. So for those of you who are applying at home, November 4th.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. May. Continued to November the 4th.
Anyone who is here to speak on KG Collectives, return to ZBA, could you please raise your hand so that I can unmute you?
Do you want to do the minutes at the end of the meeting?
Well, we've got acceptance of minutes. We should probably, I think we should probably... We should probably do that now. Let's do it now.
Motion to accept the minutes as presented?
First of all, is there, are there any comments or any comments or recommendations or changes?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor of, all in favor of accepting the minutes of the meeting of, I guess that was what?
9220.
October the...
September 2nd.
Oh, September the 2nd. Thank you. I scratched it out. I'm sorry. I scratched it out. So there's been a motion made and seconded, roll call vote. Craig Pena?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. Minutes have been approved. And then you want to, you've got, what do you, what do you have, Pam, for housekeeping items there? You've got...
I have nothing.
Nothing? I like it.
Yep. I have nothing.
Wonderful. So we're gonna move right into the first agenda item, which is return to the ZBA, 912 Crescent Street. So do we have some, I guess you have some respondents on that, Mr. May?
Yes, Mr. Pierce has been moved up to a panelist. If there's anybody else here to speak about KG Collectives, whether you're speaking for or against, or making a presentation at 912 Crescent Street, please raise your hand. Thank you, Marcus. I will promote you. And Michael or... Marcus, I don't know who is reading your presentation, but one of you has the floor.
Oh, sorry. I'll be leading the presentation. I want to say good evening to everyone, good evening to members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to reappear before you this evening. I'm here with my partner, Marcus Johnson Smith. As you were, as you're aware, we had our zoning meeting on July 14th. We were denied by the Board because of some missing documentation, such as the host agreement, Butter's letter, Butter's notice, and also the security plan, and they also cited some necessary changes to our site plan as well as the context map. As you recall, we were here last month in front of the Board. We submitted most of those documentations, but the site plan and also the context plan was in question. We've made the substantial changes. We've met with tech review. They gave us some positive feedback of what we needed to do. We submitted updated context map as well as our site plan with our resubmission application last month. Sure you had the chance to review those documents. If you have them before you, I would love to walk you through some of the changes. If you have the context map, what was missing on the context map was a 500-foot radius. We've added that to the context map as well as a 1,000-foot radius circle. More so, the changes that were highlighted or necessary were on the site plan. On the site plan, if you can turn to that document, please. We removed all of the parking spaces that were in question along Hope Street.
Mr. Pierce, if I can interrupt for just a second, I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to first share the context map. So... Hopefully that is not sharing.
So you can see there, that's our site with the blue shaded area. It's 912 Crescent Street. And what we were missing in our initial submission was the 500-foot radius, and our surveyor added that to our context map in our new submission. And the gray areas are also the other commercial spaces, but that was the change. And this is the, the site plan, the most recent copy. Our surveyor made some changes. There were spaces along Hope Street on the left side there. There were several parking spaces that were in question. We removed those spaces and filled it with some landscape area. There was also some areas in front of the building that we added some more landscaping. As you can see, there was much more landscape into this site plan. I think it exceeds the requirement by nearly 30%. We also added a loading area in the back of the building next to parking spaces 1 and 2. The loading area would be designated for deliveries. We also added another dumpster in the rear of the building near parking space number 9. So we have our own dumpster, and then the restaurant has their own dumpster. These are all per suggestions from our tech review meeting as well. And lastly, we added a six-foot solid fence along the perimeter of the property, the rear, as well as the right side of the property. And those were the changes that were, you know, required from the zoning board as well as tech review. And we feel as though those are substantial changes. My partner and I would just, you know, respectfully ask for another chance to go in front of the zoning board. We have all the documentations that were, documents that were missing or in question. We're ready to give it another shot, and we're here this evening. Thank you. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any comments on the part of the Board?
I don't have any particular comments. I think this has been in front of us a couple of times, and it looks like they've done everything they've been asked to do. I, I mean, I wish them the best when they go back to ZBA. I don't really have any other, I don't have any questions.
Well, I was the, I was the lone dissenter at the last meeting. And, and I, and I used as my guide the, the notes and the decision that was written by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it looks to me as though you have addressed those. The only thing is, there was some, there was a vague reference in the, in the, in the zoning board's decision. It says various packing issues. I'm not gonna belabor that. If you, if you feel comfortable that you've addressed those issues, then so be it. But it looks to me as though you've made some substantial changes. You've, you've, you know, you've improved the context map, and you have revised your site plan, so I don't have any further issues with it.
Yeah, personally, I didn't, I don't see any issue. I didn't see any issues with the, the previous proposal from last month, and I don't, I don't see any issues with it now.
Okay, is there, is there, if that's completed discussion on the part of the Board, is there, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the...
Yes, you're motioning to allow them to return to the...
Yes, motion, motion to return to ZBA.
Yes, motion made and seconded. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just got a chat message in here from a person identifying themselves as 2.0, which doesn't tell me who that is. And I don't see that person as an attendee.
Do they need to... Do they need to identify themselves?
Yes, but I don't know who they are to unlock themselves. So if the person who wrote, opposed this, could identify themselves, I'd like to be able to get you on the record.
Is it, is it a technical issue, Mr. May?
I think they're logged in.
They're logged in, but their screen name says it's 2.0. And so I don't, ah, there's a 2.0. Let me unmute you. If you would like to testify.
Do they need to identify themselves?
Yes. So 2.0. If you want to turn on your camera or unlock your microphone, can we do so now and provide your name and address, please? Well, we will continue to work on that. Oh, it says Jason Reed Hall is the name. And opposed, it's in the chat feature, so... Oh, Jason Reed, Hall Street.
Hall Street is opposed. Is that, is that his only correspondence, Mr. May?
At the moment, yeah. He's driving. Oh, shame on you.
Oh, yes, please be careful, Mr. Reed. And so, so that you understand, we're just approving for this applicant to return to the zoning board.
That's correct. So he'll have another opportunity at the zoning board. I mean, we're more than willing to hear his comments, but he is technologically unable to make those.
ZB said no because parking security and...
Okay, so apparently he didn't hear, he didn't hear the, he didn't hear the applicant's comments or follow-up comments, because those things have been addressed.
Yes, I believe there was a motion on the floor, Mr. Palagi.
That is correct. I mean, can we, can we record him in opposition and then move on?
I did.
We are, yes.
He's saying the applicant did not submit the right papers, and it's not a substantial change.
Well, we reserve the right to make that judgment.
Mr. Chairman, just to make a comment, because I just read his chat, too. I'm not sure what plan Mr. Reed is looking at, because the updated plan makes sense now.
Yeah, there was, there was...
Prior plan, because I know there was some packing that I had made comments on a while back that was on the side, which was on Hope Street, which has now been redesigned on the plan, so...
Yes, he had some, it's missing information on the contact plan. He had made, we made some substantial changes and improvements on the site plan.
So I don't think this person has had a chance to see the new updated plan, but we have it.
Yeah. Mr. May, in your opinion...
ZBA is all on the floor.
Mr. May, in your opinion, can we move forward?
Yes, we have his, we have Mr. Reed's comments.
Very good. So noted. Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second to approve the return to the Zoning Board of Appeals as requested. On the roll call vote, Craig Pena?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Bob Palagi is a yes. Okay. Thank you to KG Collectives.
Thank you very much, members of the Board. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, let the zoning board know.
Thank you.
All right, second agenda items, permission to return to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Properly is at 1208 Montello Street. The denial was February the 11th of 2020. Applicant is Peter Harrison, and the, the representative is J.K. Holmgren Engineering.
Would those people who are here for this, Scott, offering testimony for a return to ZBA at 1208 Montello Street, please raise your hands so I can promote you into the panelist section. And that is all the raised hands, sir.
All right, I, so Scott is not, I see his name there, but he is not joined, he has not joined the meeting, then?
No, he has. His, his camera is off.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Are you in the witness protection program, sir?
No, I'm, I'm just, this is all way over my head.
You just, you just can't see his matching headphones like, like Rob has.
Oh, I see.
I was thinking the same thing. But as long as you can hear me, you don't need to see me, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, I mean, it's always, very good. Okay, so let's, would you like to make a presentation, Mr. Farrier?
There we go. All right.
There he is.
Sorry for the support.
Hi there, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Wonderful, thank you. Great to see you.
All right, all right. Let's, let's keep it there. All right, so, Mr. Chairman, Scott Farrier from J.K. Holmgren, representing Peter Harrison. As you said, we were before the Board of Appeals back in February for a proposal at 1208 Montello Street, right at the corner of Montello and Riverside. And what we had before the ZBA was a 32-unit, four-story building that had 24 parking spaces. Of those 24 spaces, we had, actually, we had 32 spaces. 24 of them were on the ground. Eight of them were what we were calling tandem spaces. The Board of Appeals wasn't really happy with that. They were really just considering the proposal for having 24 spaces on the ground level of the building. There was also concern about the height of the building. So as I said, that was 32 units. So we since revised the plan. The proposal you have before you tonight has three stories, 24 units in the 24 spaces, so one space per unit. So we feel like we've addressed a couple of those concerns. One being the height of the building, two being the parking issue that the ZBA specifically mentioned in their decision. The one other notable change that this plan has is because of the elimination of those eight tandem spaces that we had, we now have more green space on the south side of the building. It's still tight to Riverside, but the side opposite Riverside, right there, exactly. We have a much larger landscaped area, which provides us a opportunity to give a little more buffering to the neighbors. So hopefully, we've done the best we could on this. I think we've addressed the ZBA's concerns, and we're just hoping you'll give us a chance to get back before them in the near future, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I had one quick question. So in reducing the number of units, I guess it is what, from 32 to 24?
Yeah, we literally lopped off one story. They were eight units per story. So we got rid of the, the fourth story. Now it's a three-story building.
Okay, well, that's, that's certainly a significant change, but does that change allow you to be parking compliant now, or are you still looking for relief from parking?
Now we're at one-to-one, Mr. Chairman.
You're one-to-one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
.75 to one, I guess.
Is this, is this a 40-hour project?
No, it is not.
Okay, so what, what guides us, Mr. May? I'm just wondering, what guides, what guides the parking ratio? Is it, is it the Brockton ordinance?
Yes, sir, the Brockton ordinance would guide parking on this, and I believe that is part of their application to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
You'd need, you'd need, I would say slight, you'll need slight relief for parking.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay. That's all the comments I had. Board members, any other, anybody else have any other comments or input?
I would just say, as, as the, the Planning Board represented with the ZBA, the whole, the whole tandem parking issue was the main issue that the Chairman of that Board didn't quite agree with. And I think this is a substantial change, and it warrants a return to ZBA.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else have a comment? All right, here we go.
That, I'd like to make a motion for permission to return to the zoning board, 1208 Montello Street.
Hang on just one second. I'm not paused. I wanted to make sure we had the Ward Counselor had a chance to speak if she would like to, and also the state rep, Mr. Dubois is in the room. And if we want, if she had any comments. I think I just moved her up.
Rep Dubois, how about I'll go first?
Sounds great.
Certainly.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's Susan Macastro, Ward Force City Counselor. It does appear to me to be a substantial change. I'm happy for the reduction in units and closer to the number of parking spaces. And I just want to gently remind you that pursuant to MGL 40A, Section 16... And I just want to gently remind you that pursuant to MGL 40A, Section 16, planning board has to make specific findings on a return to zoning matter, and it's actually listed on one of the pages of your application. So I would just hate for this to be found to be defective because you didn't make those findings. Thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak, either in favor or in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, while we have a brief pause here, with the motion on the floor, you may want to consider rephrasing that motion to include the findings that you had mentioned earlier.
All right, forgotten, now who is it that made, did Tony make the original motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you might want to incorporate into the interim motion that there was a, that there was a substantial reduction in density, and there was also modifications to parking.
Okay, please add what the chairman just said, please.
When I say, I say modifications, I mean improvements to parking.
The modifications approved to the parking.
Got it, substantial reduction in density.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, so we did, we had a motion, and then I didn't, I didn't hear a second, was there a second?
A second to our motion.
All right, so we've got, we've got a motion and a second to, to for site plan approval for 702, a pad for zoning board of appeals for 1208 Montello Street, on the roll call vote, Craig Pena.
Yes.
Okay, Reggie Thomas.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. Okay, very good, agenda item number three.
Folks, good night.
Thank you, good evening. Okay, agenda item number three is site plan approval of properties at 702 North Montello Street, the applicant is Carousel LLC, it's a retail marijuana establishment, representative is Ian Woods, good evening, sir. Is there a representative for that project?
Ian is here.
Hang on just a second, I am promoting people, Mr. Woods, promote the panelists. Are there any other attendees wishing to speak on this project? If you could raise your hand, I will promote you all. Seeing none at this time, Mr. Chairman, the call is yours.
All right, thank you, good evening, so Ian Woods, you are on, you are on, and we would, we would welcome your comments on the, on your application.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody, members of the planning board. This is an application for site plan review for 702 North Montello Street. My name is Ian Woods, I'm a Brocktonian and a social equity applicant. I am a local businessman and have a 60% interest in the company, and my partner Milton Naziopoulos is another Brockton and a local business owner whose company has a 40% share. We have secured funding from local banks and financial companies in order to fund the establishment of this business, including the renovation of the existing structure. We will be enhancing the green space with a few low-height plantings per CCC regulation. As you can see by the context map and engineer's letters, there are no schools or retail establishments within 500 feet of the property. This proposal is to convert the existing three-business retail location into a single retail marijuana store. Our target audience will be the commuters and residents that live within 500 yards of the store. We anticipate that a majority of the clients will use our state-of-the-art app to order the product and then come to the location just to pick it up. As you can see on the plans as well, there are no changes to the existing site plan conditions. The only exterior changes will be to the window and door openings.
Mr. Woods?
Yes, sir.
I apologize for interrupting you, I am attempting to share your application with the screen, I now have the context map off, so you can see that we're at North Montello and is that Ames Street?
Yes.
Okay, and now I will go to the drawings of the building. Let me do that just a touch. And then the architectural drawings. Here are the elevations you were just speaking about, removing the garage door, the drive-in door.
Yes, sir.
Which is here on the south-facing elevation, I'm sorry for the interruption, you may go ahead.
Oh, no problem, thank you again for actually explaining that. So, yes, the only exterior changes will be to that door and the windows. We are required to have one parking spot per 250 square feet, which is four parking spots. We have five, which will remain as they are. That's all we have to present tonight, I just want to thank the board members for the time tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Woods. Okay, so you've been, you were before, this project was before check review?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a couple of concerns that the, that the board has. I wasn't at that meeting to be in the interest of full disclosure, I wasn't at that meeting, but did you, did you provide some sort of a traffic analysis, is that required, is that a requirement of the, of the application?
Yes, we did.
Okay, was that was that reviewed by engineering, do you know, can you help me with that, either Pam or Rob, was that approved by, was that reviewed by traffic, by engineering?
It was reviewed by engineering and zoning.
And then, I, I'm getting this secondhand, so please excuse me, but there were some concerns about the traffic analysis, there were concerns about parking, employee parking. And so I'm wondering, in doing your, in doing your parking analysis, are you is, did you take your parking, now your parking requirements from the city of Brockton ordinance?
Yes, sir.
So that, so in other words, you took your net, you took your net retail space, and that, and that generated the, the requirement of four parking spaces, you said?
Yes, sir.
How many employees would you have at any given time, or rather, what's the, what's the maximum number of employees that you'll have at any one time?
Three to five, and they'll be parking off-site.
So you've got, you've, you've got some dedicated parking?
Yes, leased location.
Did you, did you provide evidence of that, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so you provided evidence of your leased parking at the, at the site plan approval meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And zoning as well.
All right, there was no.
Can I, can I mention that all these questions, the parking questions have been asked and answered at, in zoning?
Okay, I was not aware of that, Mr. Pena. I wasn't at that meeting, and then I've been informed that you still have some, some unaddressed property taxes on the site?
No, they were paid.
Oh, they were?
Can you get us a receipt showing that the 2019 taxes?
Yes, we'll have it for you tomorrow.
Is that what's showing as owed?
Correct.
Not current ones?
It was paid three weeks ago on August 1st.
Okay, well, that probably should have come to us. Definitely should have come to us.
Okay, and so that's his explanation, both Pam and this is explanation for the concerns for parking, has that now been satisfied? He's got, he has a dedicated off-site commitment for, for employee parking? I was not at the zoning board meeting, and I was not at the site plan, the site plan review meeting, so I.
I believe, I believe Mr. Pena did answer that.
Yeah, as far as, as far as the, all the questions from the zoning board, all the parking questions were asked and answered, that, and, and it was, it was approved.
Very good, well, does anybody else on the planning board have any further comments, questions, comments, concerns? Is there anybody from the public, this is being a public hearing, is anybody from the public that would like to speak, either in favor or in opposition to this site plan, site plan application?
And again, if anybody.
Yes.
Hello, Rob May, this is State Representative Michelle Dubois, I just wanted, Quicksbank Street, Brockton, Nats, I just wanted to be registered in support of Mr. Woods' application here tonight, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to weigh in with my support, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other attendees on board who would like to, please raise your hand so I can promote you to a active role? I have a chat just opened up.
Hello?
From Spink Engineering to all panelists, this would be a good, this would be good for our neighborhood, neighbors and our neighborhood.
Oh, hello.
Spink Engineering, if you could tell me what your actual name is, and address, we would appreciate that.
They are the engineers for this project.
They're the engineers, Rob.
Ah, well, that's.
So I'd be surprised if they were.
A little, a little biased testimony.
Yeah, we might, you could be opposed, but I doubt it.
Can you unshare your screen? Thank you.
Any other comments that you see, Mr. May?
Hello?
Yes.
Sorry, um, can you guys hear me or see me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt, I don't know if I'm in the in the right spot or not, I live off, or off Earl Street. Is this the, the meeting to discuss the new development that was supposed to happen there?
No, I think.
No.
No.
Yeah.
Not, no.
Oh, so we haven't discussed it yet?
Uh, which project on Pearl are you, are you talking about?
Earl.
Earl.
You, you want the head sheet project.
For the head sheet, okay, no, that's further on down, that's agenda item number six.
Oh, because you haven't discussed it yet, okay, sorry, thank you, I just got here, sorry, one minute.
Thank you.
Let me, all right.
Okay, so do you, do you have anybody else that wants to be recognized, Mr. May?
He's muted, I don't see anybody else that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, no more hands up.
Motion to approve? Okay.
There are standard conditions to come with these, so I ask that when you make the motion, you make the motion that it includes the standard approval conditions.
Standard conditions.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion has been made with second conditions, with, with conditions, and a second has been made. Now for the roll call vote. Craig Pena.
Yes.
Reggie Thomas.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Support.
Thank you.
Board members.
Okay. Again, for the record, agenda item number four is a preliminary subdivision, 134 Amos, Amoston Street, six-lot residential subdivision, that's Robert Kane and Attorney James Burke, that has been continued to November the 4th. Next item is preliminary subdivision, properties at Knapp 74 Flats, 18 Market and 1-4 Copeland Street, it's a two-lot residential subdivision. One, Troches is the applicant, owner applicant, and land survey is the representative.
Would those presenting and wanting to testify, please raise your hand so I can promote you. Mr. Malcolm and who else did I just come out? Ah, John, yes. And is Todd filling in on this also, or is that, did I get him by mistake?
No, Todd is the last item.
Todd is the last item, sorry, Todd, I'm going to come over here for a second. So we should have Mr. Malcolm and Mr. McCuskey, Attorney McCuskey, excuse me, sir. Yeah, Mr. McCuskey and Mr. Malcolm are both muted.
There we go, I just unmuted myself.
And I'm going to share the site plan if you don't mind.
Is Bruce on?
He is, but he's muted, he hasn't unmuted his mic.
Okay.
Hello?
What the heck? Rob, can you unshare that for a minute?
Yep, my own.
Because when you did that, it wiped out what I was doing.
I apologize.
I know. Okay. Again, I guess.
Mr. Malcolm or Attorney McCuskey, who's leading this presentation?
So, it sounds like Bruce isn't on yet, let me just give him a quick call and tell him to unmute.
He's unmuted.
He is unmuted.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, he's not talking.
Oh, okay. I'm here. Oh, good. So, are you ready for us?
Yes.
All right, so thank you, John McCuskey, representing the applicant. This is for a preliminary subdivision for the purpose of allowing us to go to the zoning board of appeals seeking a variance for the ordinance limitations on Leach Avenue. As you probably know, Leach Avenue has been the subject of some changes over the past couple of years with some additional lots, and that it's turned from a, sort of a downtrodden back area back here to actually a, a pretty good place to live and a good place to build a home. We have two lots proposed by my client, and, and he lives on, Mr. Troches lives on Market Street, so these parcels are but him and are part of his ownership already. And what you see are two 13,000 and change square foot lots, 113,434, 113, 131, with 110 feet of frontage.
Can I share that now?
I'm sorry.
Can I share the?
Absolutely, thank you, Rob, yep.
Okay, we should be out.
Yep. So, we'd like to extend Leach Avenue down to about the middle of lot one. And pretty, just to be consistent with what, what the board and the, the planning board and the zoning board has approved in the past for the other lots further to the east. I'm going to let Bruce discuss any issues regarding elevation, drainage, et cetera. I know one question came up as to drainage, however, this is a preliminary plan, and obviously, we'd have to be back to the, to the planning board to iron out all of those issues. have to be back to the, to the planning board to iron out all of those issues. Not sure whether that's appropriate at this point, given the cost of, of analyzing that, showing everything on the plan. Uh, we need to get, obviously, past the, the Board of Appeals before we can get the final blessing from the planning board. So on a preliminary subdivision, uh, we would respectfully request that, uh, we be allowed to, uh, to get this, to, to allow us to move forward to the Board of Appeals. Bruce, do you have anything to add here?
Yeah, again, we've, uh, prepared that preliminary plan for the purpose of going to the Board of Appeals. What we've done is, the road that's been constructed so far up to our, up to our point has been with 24 feet, sort of a tremendous paving, granite curbing, and a concrete sidewalk on one side. We're proposing to extend that same construction down through our project. We've extended the paving beyond the driveway at Lot One, so it's so we can back out of the driveway and, and turn around. We're trying to limit the amount of previous area, so we don't want to increase any runoff off the site. The beginning of that project is the high point of that road going back to those three other lots that have been constructed. We're gonna pitch that down to a proposed trench drain and recharge area on our lot. I've discussed this with, uh, my engineer, Rizou Intenaro, and, uh, he, he would be involved when we get to the subdivision stage. He assures me that there's, you know, that that would be, provide no increased runoff. What we do is, any increased runoff will be contained in that recharge area. I know it was mentioned that there is some kind of a, a flooding problem or flow problem. And again, by, we are obligated not to increase the runoff off the site. But if there's a problem, and I'm not really aware of it, but we're not required to solve it, although we do attempt to do so, the only obligations we have is not to add to that, to that runoff off the site. Extended the two line through the back of, it came in from Market Street through the back of the previous lots and we're extending that down through our two lots. The water main was brought in to, uh, for the other lots and we're extending that down and putting a hydrant at the end of the lot, end of the road for flushing purposes. The topography is very severe at the end, so I mean, it, it really excludes us from content, continuing the road up, even though it's very narrow up to Copeland Street. It's quite a severe slope there, so we're, uh, that's probably one of the hardships on the site. I think that's, that's about it. And again, we have discussed the site with Zoo and, uh, we, we involved in the engineering, should we be allowed to go forward?
Okay. Very good. Uh, okay, so just for the board members, just by way of background, this was the, originally, this was the location of the three lot, the three lot subdivision that was originally on Leach Avenue that I think Mr., was that Manny Bojenga? Is that, was that-
Correct.
Is that accurate? And I know that the, the board at the time had two major concerns. One was, uh, the, the adequacy of the sewer easement that went from the back servicing the back of these three, the three, the three, the then three lots out to Market Street. That was satisfied. And then the other concern was that the, they needed to demonstrate that the, that they had the ability to turn, emergency response equipment, you know, through the openings in the, in their, in their proposed paving to go into the parking lot of, of South Junior High School. Uh, just for a point of information, the, the parking lot ends about in alignment of that, what would be the last lot line of Manny's house development there. And then following that, I think I was on that zoning case, I can't remember. Uh, I think it was, who was the one that developed the single lot there? I think that was, uh, I guess it does-
Steve Torrey.
Steve Torrey, thank you very much. Steve Torrey came before the, uh, the zoning board and he sought relief to, uh, to site a house on plot 30 minus two. And, uh, again, those same, that, that same concern came up. One of, uh, emergency equipment, and then there was some discussion on that and there was, I guess it was decided that the emergency, because it was such a short addition to the road, that they could just simply back their way into that opening that would get you back onto the, onto the paved area of South Junior High. And now we have before us an extension yet again, plus, I don't know what the exact length of the proposed paving is, but so we keep going further and further in. Now to the, to the, it's all woods to the, on the opposite side of Leach Avenue there, that undeveloped road called Leach Avenue, that's all woods there, so if emergency equipment does go up there, there's no way now that, without backing all the way down into, in making a backward backing, I guess backing into the parking lot of South Junior High that you can get emergency equipment in there, so. Typically, uh, Chief Williams, so typically what goes, if you have a medical emergency or a fire emergency, I, I guess you would think I would retain this by now, but what do you, what do you send at a minimum to, to a residence of this nature? What do you send for equipment? Do we, do we lose it? Do we lose Chief Williams?
He's on mute.
I didn't realize I was on mute. A fire engine, uh, which would be either an engine or a ladder. And an ambulance would be the minimal for a medical call. A small outside fire or something would just be a fire, um, an engine, a pumper truck. It, it does, I guess the zoning board has approved this already?
No, they, no, 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 this is-
They have it?
No, we have not.
I'm getting my cases confused today then. So it does make, um, a bit of a, a problem for us, although we do have other dead ends in the city. This is different because we don't allow them any longer. We allowed it with, um, when Steve did this, they made a cut through to, to, uh, South Junior High. And, um, this goes up further into what would be the grass area of South Junior High so that we wouldn't have to cut through any longer.
The zoning board has approved it up to the, the lot right next door.
Yes, they did, but that was, but, but opposite that is, all, it's either grass or wooded, Attorney McCuskey. That's all either grass or wooded. The, the actual paved area stops at the, uh, at that last, at the most westerly line of, of Mr. Bojenga's last lot. So if you were to drop an imaginary line down between, uh, at Manny Bojenga's lot, his most westerly lot, that's where the paving ends, so they, they would have to back up a, a considerable distance to get, and then do, and then do a three-point turn to get out of there, so. It, it is a concern. It certainly is a concern about getting in and getting, uh, emergency equipment in and out of the site. So, right, right up to the driveway of the, uh, third lot up that was developed, there was an entrance made into South Junior High so that we could pull in there and turn right around.
That's correct.
Just a short area there. This would go up into a large area and, um, it actually looks like, was that a private roadway or is that a public roadway that goes all the way out to Copeland Street?
Oh, it's private.
Private? Okay.
Believe that's private.
Okay.
Engineering has said it's, it's private, that the roadway layout doesn't exist after that point.
Okay.
So it's not a private right of way, it is real property?
It's their property, yeah.
Who's boss?
If I could share another screen, hang on just a second, please. So these are the, the three houses from Manny Bojenga. This is the new house that Steve Torrey built. And I want you to note that the, the sewer easement stops before you get to Steve Torrey. So Steve Torrey is going to have to grant an easement to get the sewer across, and we don't see any evidence of that. You'll notice that these lines are dashed or have openings in them. And that implies, according to Howard Newton, and I concur, that these properties or what is being shown as Leach Ave, actually, because it's been, it looks like it's been abandoned, is actually owned by this property owner. So it does not appear that this is actual right of way after this point.
That little lot that goes up, that's about 20 feet wide, that goes up to Copeland, is actually part of the 20,000 square foot lot?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So for clarity, Mr. May, are you saying that that, that the dash portion of Leach, of Leach Avenue or, or the portion of Leach Avenue in front of these two proposed lots is, is, is private property?
Uh, typically, when you see a survey like this and you have this dash open space, those are generally implies that those are one piece of property.
We own the fee, the plant owns the fee in that road. I mean, it's part of, we have every right, there's nobody else with rights in that, in that, I believe.
As you can see also, that's the same situation that the Board of Appeals approved and the Planning Board approved for lot 30 dash two. Prior, for Steve Torrey, that, that, that was always part of the parcel.
So we don't know if this 17,000 square foot lot actually has the rights to cross Mr. Torrey's property. As this is indicated the same way with the dashed line. So I think that there needs to be a little bit more research on that.
Well, you know, we, we, there's no, I don't believe there's any issue with regard to, um, getting any kind of, uh, agreement between the parties on that. And it, and it's, it's laid out, it's shown on the plan as, as a private way. Parties have the, the right to improve to the middle of the way, they own the, at least to the middle of the way. And I, I don't know about how much research needs to be done, at least at this juncture, for purposes of going to the Board of Appeals.
This, this dashed line would, would make me, and, and likewise, Howard, uh, Newton, suppose that this is not a, a way at all that is actually real estate. Uh, it's owned, not through the center line by the people, but it, it actually owns in its entirety.
As same as lot 30 dash two.
Yeah, but this lot, which I believe in your drawings, you are calling Lot Two, does not have the right to cross.
Uh, I think it does, but, uh, I think we could, you know, again, Rob, that's something that I don't, I don't think for tonight's purposes, uh, on a preliminary subdivision, we need to, to resolve all of the legal issues, uh, especially because it's a preliminary matter, I think. I think if anything, if we need to, if we need to research that further, that we have that available, if the Board of Appeals allows us to come, you know, to, to do this, come back to you when we have it resolved. This isn't something that you should hold up at the preliminary subdivision approval course.
I, I do, is, is there a reason why there is no provision for any cul-de-sac or turnaround for emergency vehicles at the end of the road?
Just, there just isn't room to, to do that, you know, to make a full size 60-foot radius cul-de-sac, I mean, they just would take the whole, that whole, whole area, I mean, a good portion of that whole area, so. Not practical. Uh, and if you were constructing that, and, and it would probably knock it down to the one lot if we constructed, and then it wouldn't be worth, worth even building it for the, the one, for the one lot, so again, it's, we, we know the issue, and again, there is a break in, in the, the guide rail just by that, just at the end of the original three lots. And again, I, I know that with the, if, if there was an emergency there, if the equipment had to, had to get out of there with, there would be, at least an attendant, they could back up. I mean, I'm not saying what, what you'd agree to or what the board would agree to, but physically, I've watched, watched them back trucks in and out of the Campella Fire Station all day long, so. Again, it's doable, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, I just wanted to, uh, bring that up.
I understand that, I just, I just don't think that, since we're not allowing dead ends like that anymore, why, why do we need to approve this?
I, I have a similar concern, I mean, I really do. Um, I know that, I know that that, e- even as short as the extension was to, to allow the plot 30 minus two to be developed, I know that that was, I believe that was, I know I was at that zoning board meeting, there was some concern, there was some discussion about allowing that pavement to go, again, there's not a dimension on that lot, it doesn't look like it's too wide, but there was some concern about that, letting that go, and after some discussion, I guess it was, it was agreed that a piece of emergency equipment could back up that very short way and do what, uh, Mr. Malcolm had just suggested, and that is to do a three-point turn back into the, due to the pay, the existing paving of South Junior High and then move out of it, but now you're adding, I mean, it just, it's just, it's not, it's, it's, it's far from an ideal situation in my opinion. I mean, unless, unless you see, alternatively, if you were to split the houses, I mean, possibly because of the generous amount of room that you've got between the existing house that, uh, Mr. Torrey built, if you were to squeeze the, to the right-hand house to the right and the left-hand house to the left, could you get some sort of a cul-de-sac in, a cul-de-sac in between the two houses? Something, something so that a vehicle can turn, can make a swing around there. I mean, you, can you move the, I'm just, it's not up to me to design your plan, but can you move, can you separate the houses and then try to get some semblance of a, of a cul, a cul-de-sac, half cul-de-sac in there with some, some sort of a, of a turning? I don't know.
Mr. Chair, you do have, although your rules and regs say no hammerhead turnarounds. And
Yeah.
this case, that might be something they ask.
Something what?
For two, engineering wants that turnaround?
I'm sorry, say it again, Pam, I'm sorry.
And engineering would like to see that, a turnaround?
Of some nature, of some kind.
Some nature, yes.
Yeah.
So not backing up?
Well, if you, if you put a hammerhead, if you put a hammerhead, no matter how wide, you'd have to make a three-point turn, Mr. May. You have to make a three-point turn to, however else you do it, if you back in and then nose out, or if you nose in and back out, you'd have to make a, a three-point turn to change, to change the direction, whether he agrees.
Um, Pam, did engineering also have a comment that there is no proposed drain or proposed sanitary sewer? In the street, um, or, or did they have issues, I'm sorry, with the sanitary sewer crossing the, the lot but didn't have the easement yet?
Correct, that it shows that the easement exists and they do not have any easement documents that show that the eas, that that easement goes beyond where we first saw it in, in Manny Bojenga's subdivision.
There is, there is, there is an agreement with Steve Torrey to grant easements and to extend the sewer down. Again, I'm just-
Does he still own that house?
Yeah, he still owns it right now. And he, and I think, had me prepare a plan, an easement plan, what he's done with it, I don't know, but it's extending that, each sewer easement down to the lot line of, of, of our property. The, uh, again, the straight drainage, we're proposing to put drain at the end of the road and, and recharge it. Sewer is definitely going to be extended, and I show, I show extending the sewer, and I, we have rights. Steve Torrey has verbally granted us rights, and whether he's done it on paper yet, I don't know, but he has, has agreed to extend that, obviously.
I would assume that Steve would agree to do that. I think Steve would agree to do that.
Hey, Mr. McCloskey, I, I know, I can, I appreciate you don't want to get too much into the weeds as far as the technical issues, as far as the legal issues at the preliminary stage. But maybe if you would humor me on one, one question, and that is simply that, I know that there was an easement, that there was a 15-foot-wide sewer easement that was established to service those three houses, Manny Bojenga's three houses. So in establishing that easement for their benefit, does that mean that anybody can just tag on to that easement? Does any, does that mean that everybody and anybody has rights to use that, that easement for sewer purposes? Or isn't it just limited to those three houses?
Well, I, I think if the, I'd have to look at that plan again. I, and I apologize, I don't recall that plan. But I think if it went to the edge of the lot, well, first of all, I think they could extend that easement. You can move easements, you have the right to do certain things with easements. And I'm forgetting what that, what that easement looks like. That, that went out, that went out to Market Street, I believe.
Yes, it did. And if you recall, that was the issue we had with the rights of getting it out to Market Street.
Yeah.
Which you did.
I certainly, I certainly think that Steve Torrey could allow us to, to engage into that easement without any issues, as a, as a lot owner.
But, but the, I guess, but my question is, and again, I, I don't want to get too much into the weeds with easements, but isn't that, isn't the easement, wasn't the original easement that was, that was established for the, for the cross benefit of the three homeowners? I mean, that's.
Well, that was all that was out there at the time, yeah.
Easements are for a specific purpose and to benefit someone specifically.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean you, you are limited to that if the homeowners or a homeowner agrees to allow you to access his easement rights.
Would you need to get sign-offs from Manny Bojenga's successors there?
Bruce, does Steve still own one of these lots?
Just, just the 30-2, the last one we just had approved.
I, I think we can do it through that lot.
But I mean, does, does this, would you also have releases from the three lots that Mr. Bojenga built and sold?
Well, I, I don't necessarily think so, because if you're, you know, you're not overburdening it, so to speak. It's not something that people are gonna be looking at and saying, oh, the easement's changed dramatically. It really, it's a, it's a de minimis addition onto the usage of the, of the infrastructure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, I mean, we could.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Your choices. Your choices here are only three things. You can approve it as it is now and allow them to move on. You can deny it, or you can approve it with certain conditions made. That's it.
Are you, are you sure that we can't continue a preliminary?
You can continue it, certainly. You could continue it to another meeting. But your choices are, if you pass it the way it is now, then those changes don't get made. So you would need to, if you want certain things changed, you would need to put them into your decision now.
Okay, well, I was thinking more in terms of, I don't, certainly the other board members, please, you know, render your, render your opinion. I was thinking of giving the applicant the opportunity through, through a continuance, to give the applicant an opportunity to address those issues and maybe revise the plan for something, revise the plan to reflect the concerns of the board he has, has here tonight, and has expressed here tonight, as far as investigating that sewer, but certainly as far as coming up with some sort of a general.
Because that's. I don't, I don't see a reason to continue, I don't see a reason to continue in that. There's, there's a lot of questions with the plan as presented, that if they want to, if they want to progress, they need to come forward with a plan that, that actually suits, I mean, what we, what we're looking for. There's been a lot of interest in that whole small little area over the last couple of years, and I can't, I can't support it, and continuing this plan the way, the way it's presented.
Well, then, then you're saying that we could continue to come back with a modification?
I'd like to, I'd like to see it presented in a whole, with a whole new presentation.
Then let's continue it.
All right.
I'd agree with that.
Now, they're asking for a continuation. We've expressed, the boards, the board and the city has expressed their concerns. I think it's reasonable to give the applicant an opportunity to try to address them.
Sure.
Right.
And that includes, in my opinion, that would include, after the plan has been revised, to take it to the engineering department, take it to the planning department, and get their input on it before it comes back to the planning board.
I mean, so what is the difference between continuing it or denying the plan? Do they have to come back with a whole new plan, either way?
Well, it just saves them from, from applying again.
Well, which means another check.
You know, quite frankly, Craig, the, I would think that your position should be, let's try to make this something that's workable for the applicant, and, and make it something that we can move forward without throwing up a roadblock. We're, we're willing to continue it. We're willing to come, you know, we're willing to talk about some changes. And I, and I think that's a very reasonable request. And, and, you know, to throw a, throw a denial in, in, in front of it, it just means you get a one more step. And I don't think you should be doing that.
I think, yeah, I think you, you realize I'm the last one to throw up roadblocks.
Well, don't start tonight.
But, but this, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of questions around all the, I mean, we, we've had a lot of deliberation around every development around that, that entire, tiny little area of the city. And to have a plan come back with, that needs total revision, is it such a big thing to ask to come back with a new plan? Whether we continue it or deny it?
You know, and that's just it. Come back, we, we can come back with a modification. And, you know, everything that, everything that you'd ask an applicant to do, the more, the more time that people have to throw at it, the more expensive it gets for him. And this is something he's just looking at, hey, is this something I, that maybe I can get to the Board of Appeals? So let's, let's not make it harder on him. Let's, let's, you know, let him move on.
That, well, that's, that's, I'm not, I'm not trying to make it harder on anybody, but there are just so many questions with the, with the plan.
And we're gonna answer them, hopefully.
Craig, we, we've raised those, and I think we, I think we, I think we, we raised those concerns, and we, with that, with an explanation to boot, so that, give the, my feeling is, give the applicant at least an opportunity, and then fair enough. He comes back and it's, and it's not to your liking, then you'll have to, you'll have to.
Yep.
Vote accordingly.
We're not doing any harm by continuing.
This is, this is what the preliminary plan process is.
I think my colleague, Tony Gonzalez, said she can, she can agree with that. If she's willing to make a motion to continue, I'll, I'll second it.
Is there a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue to address the issues with the sewer easement.
Is there a second?
Continuing to the next meeting?
Is that enough time, Mr. McCloskey?
I'm sorry?
Are you continuing to the next meeting?
A couple, a couple months, I think.
Two months?
Bruce is in Florida, so I think, Bruce, what do you think, two months?
Yes, I mean, we, we just got to address the issues. I mean, the physical changing of the plan is, we can be, we can do it, and I can be back in a day to do it. But to decide how we're going to, the sewer easement, I can see that's easily addressed. But the turnaround is something we have to, we have to work on. Oh, again, I think two months will be a reasonable extension.
Okay, to, to, continue for two months, Pam, thank you.
Second.
Who, who seconded?
Me.
All right, Craig seconded. So there's been a motion made and seconded to continue the plan to, to the December meeting. The applicant has heard the concerns of the planning board and the planning department. So I'm sure they'll, they'll revise the plan accordingly. Okay, roll call, vote. Craig Pena?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Apology is a yes.
Thank you, members of the board, and Craig, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Okay. The next agenda item is item number six. It's a definitive subdivision. The property is at Nap 37, plots 4, 6, and 18 Augusta Avenue, and plots, and plot 36 Prospect Street. It's an 18-lot residential subdivision. The owner is Frederick Hebshi, the, and the representative is Curly Ann Hansen. Let's see, do we have them on?
Bill Self is here. Todd is here.
Todd is there, Bill Self is there. Good evening, gentlemen.
And I'm here.
Guessing that everybody that's left as attendees is here for that?
Yeah.
Yes. Shall I start?
Good evening. Yes, good evening. So I've, I've read the agenda item, and are you on this case, I assume, Mr. McCloskey?
I've known Freddie for 75 years.
I've known him for 150.
You're both a lot younger than I thought you were.
All right, please, please.
So I'm here by default. Yes, so this is a, an old, old subdivision that was never, never built out. This is Bruce calling me. Old subdivision that was, wasn't built out, but for 100 Augusta. And so that sat for quite some while, some time. I know Fred came before the zoning board of appeals a couple of years ago, seeking relief for one of the lots. And subsequent to that, we, we sat down and, and looked at this subdivision, especially in light of some of the most recent changes regarding what the Board of Appeals and what the planning board is looking for in new subdivisions. And Bill Self, and, and I, and Todd have been involved in this for quite some time. And we're looking at, obviously, the frontage and square footage of each lot. The older subdivision, the frontage and square footage was insufficient relative to the new standards that have been basically indicated by the, by the boards. And so Bill has, Bill and Todd have drawn out some significant changes to this plan. We recently met with the neighbors back a couple of weeks ago over at the old North Junior High, and tried to get through some of the issues. I think we did fairly successfully. I know there's some questions that some of the public have, some of the neighbors have. But I think maybe, I'm not sure how we're gonna do this lot by lot, but, oh. Fred sold his home to Reverend Michael, and there've been some changes to, we're trying to accommodate him significantly. Interestingly enough, his lender let him purchase this property with his driveway still existing on, on Fred's property. I'm not quite sure how that happened, but we've, I went out to the property a week ago, and we looked at the driveway, and since, he hasn't seen it yet, but since has modified the side yard configuration to accommodate what the reverend has as, as existing layout. So perhaps, Bill, maybe I'll turn it over to you to go through the details.
Yes, good evening. My name's Bill Self, Curly Ann Hansen. We prepared the plans for Mr. Hebshi. We're in front of the, we filed them actually last year. And at the time, we had, had proposed 18 lots. And we had minimum frontages that, through consultation with the Board of Appeals and, and Planning Board, we got the consensus that the, the minimums should be no less than 125 feet. Originally, we had 18 lots, and what we did was, the 18 lots actually include one small parcel that would be combined with the budding land of the, of the house that's there that the reverend has bought. And the second lot, which is labeled Lot 4, is designated just for drainage. So the original was 16 lots that we had, 16 proposed buildable lots. We've reduced it down to 13. We've made the lots bigger. We've tried to incorporate on most all the lots to have minimum frontage 125, and also to try to have the, the lot width and depth meet the requirements. Excuse me. There are a couple that, that I'd like to go over lot by lot that deals with that, that item. But basically, it's the, it's the, cutting lots down to be 125 feet minimum frontage. Most of them, most of them have areas that, a large of them, pretty much all of the adjacent lots in that area on the existing Augusta Ave, Casari, Angela, Cross Ave, and out on to Prospect Street. So the original, the original subdivision was 1965. We've adjusted the roadways from that original slightly. Back in 65, they had actually 21 proposed lots. So we're gone, we've gone from the original subdivision in 1965 down to, from 21 down to 13. So I think if, if Mr. May could, could maybe put, as far as the plans, if he could put sheet number four, would give you an overall, the overall picture of the lording plan on a 40-scale, that would perhaps give the board a much better view of individual lots.
So for a second? Whoops. Do you also?
Okay. Thank you, Rob. As you look at it, John just brought up, as far as the house that was number 100, the existing dwelling, 100 Augusta Ave. You can see that the original plan, if you could slide that down just a whisker, Rob, you can see that that was proposed as a, as a, as a, as a lot on the original submitter we made last year. As John brought up, that the, this proposal that you see here, that it showed that, I believe, we've labeled it as Lot 14. And it's, if, it's right next to where the driveway is. What we've done is, we had originally proposed the lot and tried to incorporate as much of the driveway as we could, and then still leave as Lot 13 with, including around the curve, the 125 minimum frontage, and the, the lot width, 125 for the depth of 100 feet. The, the plan that we, we actually sent over to the planning board, and I don't know if Pam had had a chance to see it, or even given it to Rob, display is what John brought up, that in essence, talking to the, to the owner, Mr. Gilbert, at the neighborhood meeting, is, one of us learned was that losing a little bit of the end, about five, six feet of the driveway that was there. So that plan, as an addendum plan, we sent over to the planning board to view, so that we've, we've made sure that the existing driveway in its entirety would be on a separate lot. And.
They did not see that plan, it came in.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's unfortunate, but that was the change that John was mentioning. We still maintain on Lot 13, we still maintain the 125, we're going around the curve on to Cross Ave. But we, unfortunately, we don't meet the lot width for that depth in the front of it. Technically, we do in the back of it. We have 125 by 100 box, if you would, on the rear of it. But we'd be looking for the frontage, the waiver on that.
The amended plan is what is in front of you, on the screen now.
Yeah, that's the, that's the one. This was, this was something we, we sent over this week, just, we were sent over late this afternoon. But I know you, you're. you're, you're, you're kind of looking at this one that we have in front of you, but we'd like to adjust that lot. Uh, as far as if we could, if we can go down the line for the lots, um, most of them, as you see across the street on Augusta Ave, uh, Lot One, Lot Two, you see that we, you know, we're meeting the, uh, you know, we're asking for variances for frontage on Lot One, uh, we're just shy of the lot width and depth on, uh, on the northerly line, ninety-nine seventy-four instead of a hundred, uh, we'll be asking the board of appeals, hopefully that give us relief for that small amount, couple of inches. Uh, on the, on the next lot, Lot Two, again, you know, we'd meet the, uh, the frontage coming around, around the, halfway around the curve on that one and, uh, the lot, we'd have to ask for some relief on the lot width, uh, lot depth on the, on the condo lot. Lot Three, as you see, is the Cross Ave extension, uh, that was basically, uh, if you look on your assesses map, it's, it, there is a, an easement that's been created over the years on there in this for sewer and water and, and that comes down from the existing public way of Cross Ave stopping at the property line. And, uh, so we basically held and fit that, that, that extension of the cross to intersect more of a symmetrical, uh, intersection than it was originally proposed and going across and continuing, uh, and, and the longer dead end street. Uh, what that did, just the roads themselves, when they come up and intersect there, you can see Lot Three as a creation, you know, of that intersection, there wasn't much we could do with it and then still extend the Cross Ave, uh, we'd be asking for, even though we have adequate, you know, over a hundred and twenty-five feet on Augusta Ave, we wouldn't be accessing it from Augusta, we'd be accessing it from Cross, so we'd be asking for relief down the frontage of a hundred and four, or a waiver with the planning board. Uh, Lot Four, again, if you, when we go to the larger plans, it, it designates, that's the drainage area, reserved for drainage area, not a buildable lot. Uh, Lot Five, you can see that, uh, we're just shy, we have a hundred and twenty-five minimum frontage, uh, fourteen thousand six hundred and three square feet, you can see that just that little jog in the rear of the property, uh, prevents us from having that one twenty-five for a hundred feet, it's just, it just protrudes into that, that area. Uh, Lot Six, uh, same one twenty-five, fifteen thousand square feet, uh, we would meet the, uh, we would meet the, the lot width and depth of one twenty-five, uh, one hundred. Lot Seven, around the cul-de-sac, uh, we've got plenty of area on through there, as far as frontage, uh, we, we would, uh, one twenty-five, uh, by a hundred foot, uh, depth, uh, regulation there. Lot Eight, uh, Lot Seven would be twenty-seven thousand seven ninety-nine, Lot Eight, same situation, uh, we would be a little short on the, on the lot width, lot depth on that particular lot, we, we do have, uh, proposing, uh, twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet on that lot. Lot Nine, again, uh, we meet the, we're, we're holding, asking for a waiver, one twenty-five, uh, we meet the lot width, lot depth on that. Uh, Lot Ten is the, is just shy of the lot width, lot depth by just, again, just a couple of inches. And, uh, Lot Eleven, same situation, one twenty-five, now Lot Eleven will be thirteen thousand six hundred thirty-seven, again, just missing a couple of inches on the northerly side of the, of the property. Uh, Lot Twelve, uh, we'd, uh, we're asking for, you know, relief down to the one forty-seven thirty-six from one seventy-five, again, that meets the one twenty-five, a hundred foot depth and, uh, and width for that lot. Uh, Lot Thirteen is the one that's, you see here, it would have been one twenty-five more than that, that's, uh, excuse, the, uh, total frontage listed and that's an error, that was only halfway around, that was the total frontage on, on Augusta Ave under your regulations, frontage is only measured halfway into the radius, uh, so there would be another identical seventeen feet, but, but if you, even though it technically doesn't meet the requirements of lot frontage because it's on the condo lot, it's, uh, the, you know, the width of the lot, uh, here is, is, is minimum hundred twenty-five and that'd be straight across. Uh, this, again, with the revision that we wanted to, uh, propose at late minute, uh, we'd have to come back and, and, and show that, uh, we would, we'd had, we'd still have close to the twenty-eight thousand square feet, but we wouldn't meet the lot width and lot depth, we do in the back from the angle point back, technically, we do have a box of lot width on there. Uh, those are the, those are the lots and, you know, we feel that, uh, if, uh, I think, Rob, if you could just switch me, just to, uh, dwell a couple of things, just on a couple of comments from the, the deputy fire chief and under the first, uh, division and we've updated and sent him some information, sent them these plans, if you could go to, uh, let me get your sheet number here. If you go, go to sheet, uh, probably, uh, five, uh, if you could go for, to five C, Rob, uh, it's basically the grading and drainage plan, I just wanted to address a couple of items, um, on this particular case and if you can slide it down just a little bit, see the connection out to Pleasant, uh, Prospect Street. Uh, during the neighborhood meeting, one of the concerns were, uh, from the neighbors as far as, uh, access and what we were, what we were showing is circulation for the subdivision. Um, and one of the concerns, if you look on the plan at, at Cross Ave where it meets the property line going, going to the east, you can see that there's a guard rail there. Uh, I was told by the, uh, former city councilor that, uh, they had asked the city because of the, the cut-through traffic when they paved, uh, Augusta Ave from Prospect down to the end continued up to Cross Ave, they were getting cross, uh, traffic from Cross Ave and, and they had requested the council that they could do something to block that off, so it's presently blocked off. Uh, we had, uh, you know, discussed the plans, uh, you know, with the, with the neighbors and, and let them know that, uh, because of the number of lots, uh, most of, uh, the extension of Cross Ave after goes over Augusta Ave, there's a lot of traffic that, that we believe that with stop signs at the intersection and, you know, certainly more houses in there with more activity than, uh, we believe it's not gonna be the stop, uh, drive-through that it was there before, uh, having just, you know, uh, no, no, you know, nothing that prohibits the people from going straight through. Here, you'd have occupations, you know, stop signs, I don't think it'd be worth anyone's while. One of the, one of the recommendations that, uh, that the deputy, uh, fire chief had made was that, uh, I, as his letter states, uh, his email was that, uh, he feels that because of the number of lots and the added, uh, you know, uh, number of people there, that it should be open, what his, what his suggestion was, and we take it, uh, we agree a hundred percent, was that the roadway, the guardrail would stay while the roadway was under construction until the roadways were completed, so that you weren't dealing with the construction traffic, uh, you know, trucks, things like that, safety issues, uh, and then once, so once the streets were in, the infrastructure was, was in there and, and, uh, they started to, you know, to build the homes, they had the homes for sale and then, uh, the guardrail could be taken down. Again, uh, we've sent them over the new plans, hopefully he's had a chance to, to take a look at them and send a letter, uh, somewheres along the line to the planning board. His, his only other comment was he'd like to see another hydrant or two, uh, what we did do was send him over, uh, a, a plan highlighting exactly the number of hydrants plus the existing plus the proposed, so that he have a better idea of being seen exactly, so we, we hope that we've satisfied his request there. As far as, uh, if we could go, uh, back one, Rob, I believe it's, uh, I believe it's, uh, five B, uh, the input, again, coming from the neighborhood meeting, uh, was certainly the traffic that I, I, I think was one of the main, main items, uh, of course, it was, it was a, an area of quite a bit of dumping and, uh, as soon as the, uh, would see on one hundred Augusta Ave, they kind of blocked out the existing paved access and that certainly has ceased, so it's, it's helped at least that cause. If you see at the bottom, it, here's the cul-de-sac Cross Ave, you can slide it up just a little bit, one of the concerns was some of the neighbors down along Augusta Ave and that would have been to the east there, uh, plot ten, plot, plot eleven, that the natural flow of the property is from, from west to east across the proposed Cross Ave, uh, which that would intercept quite a bit of the, uh, the surface water and put it into the drainage system. And, uh, the other thing that we assured them that we've tried another, another project and been very successful, that, uh, at the backs of our lots, uh, we would install an earth and swale that would remain an earth and just a, a depression, a swaled area, it'll be grass loomed and seeded, uh, be able to be mowed, um, and hopefully with, uh, with their concern certainly was water, they get water now, uh, that would, uh, would certainly, uh, improve their conditions as far as surface water, uh, there's no guarantees we can make as far as water tables where the foundations are constructed, certainly that years back, they, they didn't pay a lot of attention to that. Uh, one other, uh, concern by one of the neighbors specifically that, uh, at, at the end of the cul-de-sac lot there, which is Lot Seven, was that he was wondering that, uh, about the trees, the vegetation and the land itself over the years, I think when they sat, when they built the first part or over the years, it's not been a, it's not an original, uh, site, it's been, uh, it's been dug out, it's been, you know, fill's been brought in, you know, so, but his concerns were about the vegetation of the, of the road, how much of the trees were gonna leave and we told him, you know, in this particular case, because the, because of the, the topography of what's existing now and the nature of it, that, uh, most of these trees would be, would be probably removed, uh, except on the, on the borders, on the edges, uh, certainly if there's any large native trees, uh, you know, healthy trees along the back properties of Augusta Ave, then, uh, we'd try to maintain anything we could, but hi- his suggestion or his, his request was that we, uh, if we're gonna lose the vegetation, that put a, put stuff, uh, you know, something like a stockade fence and, uh, you know, through consultation, uh, we, we believe that, that would be something that we certainly entertain in the plans for the planning board to, to have a view at, as well as the board of appeals. So along those br- that property lines down in Augusta, you can see that they're, they're very, they're very small, you know, small lots themselves. So, you know, they're, they're something that, uh, that we, we give them the privacy as well as reserve the privacy for the, for the new lots and the new, and the new homes that would, that would be going in there. Uh, I think that's, I've covered most of what we're proposing, uh, basically, the, the waivers we'd be asking for are the frontage waivers and the length of the dead end by extending, by extending, uh, Cross Ave, if you could slide that down a little bit, Rob, uh, to show the intersection of, of the other street. Uh, it was just over seven hundred feet, but we'd ask for a waiver for the roadway depth because of the dead end, uh, but, uh, uh, it certainly gives it a better flow, you know, for, for the lots coming in there, so you'd see Cross Ave coming from, from north, coming down from the cul-de-sac down intersection of, of, uh, Augusta Ave, the existing intersection, then that would be about seven hundred feet in length. So basically, that's what we'd be looking for, uh, under the planning board rules and regulations.
All right, Mr. Bill, you, is that, does that complete your presentation?
Yeah, the only, just, if I could just touch on one more point, uh, Bob, is just, uh, Augusta Ave, that was actually built partially, uh, and from Prospect all the way out to Earl Street, that was actually built, uh, in nineteen twenty-five. Within that, that easement rights were, uh, for Augusta Ave, even though it's, it's private now, was they had the installed, uh, uh, water, they installed drainage and also installed sewer. So the infrastructure as far as that goes, that you see Augusta Ave from Prospect out to Earl, there being a drainage, there being a utility easement from at the end of Augusta, presently existing out to Earl Street, uh, that was physically done, so we're actually tying into the, to those, to those utilities and those, uh, uh, drain and sewer lines that are out the mound, including the water.
Okay. Are you, um, I was gonna ask you, Bill, uh, so are you in receipt of the, of that list of, uh, concerns, uh, that I believe the engineering department generated up, that came through the planning department, but did you, was that sent along to you, do you have that?
Well, the, the original, we had a list of original, uh, concerns that we've addressed most of those questions, uh, but we, we have not heard, uh, just late this afternoon, we did get some, a little information of a couple of things that, uh, Chiqui had looked at and we'd like to, you know, certainly didn't have a chance to address them, but certainly we, we'd sit down with him, uh, some of them was, uh, one of the, the concerns he just addressed, uh, with a quick email was, uh, some of the, the, the swale, um, down, it's behind the lots on Augusta Ave, uh, was, he was looking for some access to it, but we'd like to sit down and talk to him, it's, it's really not a drain easement, it's not really functioning as the drainage per se, it's just taking surface water.
Yeah.
We've done it in other places and it's worked very successful, it's kept up by the homeowners, there's no expense or no, uh, maintenance on it by the town, they basically gonna be a lawn, uh, so we'd like to, you know, we'd like to sit down and talk to him on that.
Yeah.
Uh, I know, certainly, uh, we did not, uh, that's the only thing, you know, it was preliminary, uh, we haven't heard, seen a complete review, we've, we've, we've done quite a bit of the lots, incorporated a lot of his comments, you know, in this new revision, so, uh, in all fairness to, uh, Chiqui, uh, to have an opportunity, uh, we were anticipating another list to be able to, you know, go through and just, you know, finalize whatever concerns he might have.
So?
Yes.
I spoke with him about four o'clock and he said he wasn't adding anything at that time, so.
Well, he, as far as the list of his concerns, one of the, a couple of the concerns, uh, well, well, we've already, like I said, we've addressed a lot of the concerns, one of the concerns where if you look at the sheets, uh, normally you might have a forty scale throughout, what we've done is kept, you know, you've seen the, the sheet that's in front of us now, sheet four, but the rest of the utility plans or things like that, he requested that we, we put them on a twenty scale, so we have, our plans do, uh, tend to be a little bit busy, we'd like to put all the information on them, so at his request, we enlarged the, uh, the, most of the set to incorporate that twenty scale, uh, make it, uh, easier, it does make it easier actually for construction, uh, in, in later stages and things like that, but that's one of the concerns. The only other concern that, that I addressed and he, he had requested that we put this on the mass GIS system, um, unfortunately, you know, it, if we had known, uh, that, that would have been one of his requests, we certainly would have, would have, would have done that, uh, still maintaining the Brockton City base for the elevations, but, um, to, for us to have to change that, I mean, it's not part of your regulations, uh, but again, if we had, we had completed the project and, uh, I'm sure Mr. Plagi knows that, uh, how much work would have gone into having to do that at the last minute, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's an awful lot of work.
Yeah, and, and again, my, my suggestion was if, if, if that's gonna be the standard for the city, all, you know, uh, we as surveyors, uh, it's not an issue for us, as long as we know going in, uh, we tie into that system and then, you know, we can, it can be adaptable, uh, you know, and mostly a GIS maps as well, so to me, it's a good idea, but unfortunately, not up to late state, the game for, for applicant coming in, it's an undue expense for the applicant.
Yeah.
We don't, the buttons aren't that good on the, on the, on the, on the new computers to, to rotate it and shift it, Bob.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's why we, we'd ask, uh, that, uh, that we can, you consider us, the, the, the system that we're on would be adequate.
So you, you know, in a nutshell, you know, Bill, that, um, so the, the, that little, that little shot laundry list that we got today that was, uh, the city, he's suggesting a permanent maintenance easement needed to the city of Brockton for four, five, six, and seven, that's that thirty-foot wide easement that you've indicated in the back of those lots.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I'd like to make, talk to the board and, and to Chiqui, and again, you know, we've done this, uh, up in Lindwood Street and was very successful and the, all the, the only thing, the only part of that, that easement, Bob, would be if you looked at, uh, the utility back in the fives, uh, sheet five, if I can just give you that sheet, Rob, and you could put it up there.
Yeah, I'm looking at five D.
Yeah, five- Yeah, 5B, if you look at 5B, you can see down, the only, the only part that, that would, would have, we feel a point of maintenance would be, would be down at the, where it cuts into Augusta Ave. You can see that the catch basin, you can see that there's a, that last contour of 157, Bob. That's pretty much, we, we trying to slow it down. So any, and it's only gonna be in a heavy rainstorm that you're, you're probably gonna see. It's just coming off the grass in the back of the building. You can see on all of our lots, we have the recharge from the roofs going into, into recharge units that'll be sub, subsurface. So we're not putting the roof drainage in there. So it's really to, it's really is a mechanism to try to prevent what the residents already were getting that was overland flooding at some, you know, heavy, heavy storms. So we know that this could, could really resolve some of the problems. But as far as the maintenance, if you look down at the intersection, you can see the catch basin that goes into the existing manhole E5. You can see that we do have an access road right there, right next to the basin, which would be the only part of the functioning, you know, drainage easement that would be, you'd need, you know, maintenance on.
Well, that's, that was gonna be one of my comments. I thought, looking at the plan, and I saw Chiqui's recommendation or suggestion for an additional 10-foot wide access along the back of the length of easement. I mean, your lots, your building lots are impacted enough as it is. And I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I mean, there's another way to address that. I think you just began to do it. This is my personal thought. You, so long as there's access along Augusta Avenue into the 30, 30-foot wide easement, you don't have any piping in there. And it looks like that, to me, that the slopes that you're gonna be creating in your swale are gentle enough. And you got five to ones, you got six to one slopes on average. If you put, where I'm going with this, in place of committing to a 10, an additional 10-foot wide access, you, you could, you could achieve the same thing by just allowing for a tractor, what's going, what's realistically, what's gonna go in that easement for maintenance? There's gonna be a backhoe of some, of some sort, or maybe a mowing machine. If you, if you could physically enter from Augusta Avenue and then maybe, and then maybe see if you can come up with a location for 10-foot wide easement on the, on the pointer compass here, on the, on the northerly side of, of lot number seven. I don't know if the board members are following me.
Yeah, that could be done.
You see what I'm saying there?
Yes.
That would allow you to enter the easement, stay within your easement, bring your maintenance equipment in there. Again, I'm suggesting that the, that the slopes that you're gonna create in your swale are gonna be gentle enough that you can negotiate and navigate it with a machine. And then if you wanted to leave it, pick some, pick some favorable, non-impactful location that goes across lot seven to come back out onto the street. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes. And that, that could be done right along, we, we'd probably come in from the property line, probably see the bottom of the slope there, 174, Bob, coming off the cul-de-sac. We could, we could, we could put in a 10-foot easement there to be able to gain access to that end of it. Again, we, we really feel that, you know, that's gonna be, that'll always be maintained by the homeowner. It's gonna be grass. It's gonna be part of their, their landscape, you know, over the, over the time. I'm sure they'll plant some shrubs or things like that for beautification. But it's, it's, it's not something that you would, you would tend to need a maintenance factor for street maintenance. All the infrastructure in, in the, the cross Ave extension, that's gonna handle the drainage runoff down into that detention area at lot four.
I think so. I, I agree. Rob, can you bring up sheet 5D, 5D, David?
Working on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. And then when you get that, just focus on lot number seven. I mean, I'm just, I mean, it's up to you guys what you wanna design. But I was just suggesting something. You see, Bill, where your, you, where your grass swale begins or ends?
Yes.
To the rear. I mean, you've got some fairly flat ground there. You, you could, you could, you could create an easement of 10 or 15, whatever you want, 12-foot wide easement.
Yeah, I agree.
To get a vehicle, you know, cause that, that area that you're talking about is, that's fairly sloped. But you get the idea. Pick someplace there and then that, that completes the circuit for a, an act, for a, for a maintenance vehicle should you need one. And then you don't have to, you don't have to further impact the backs of these lots.
Right. And again, I would, we, we could certainly, I'd wanna keep it at the, just off the bottom of the slope at that 1, 174 grade, and then be able to run it right in there. And then next it's, you know, it's, you know, right at the end of the cul-de-sac, which would be, you know, more than enough area to, to be able to access it.
Sure. Well, it's just my thought anyway.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Does the board, do the board members have any other thoughts or comments or? All right. Well, okay. So this being a public hearing, is there anybody who's in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this subdivision, definitive subdivision? Would you please acknowledge yourself?
I just wanna make some.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Pam.
No, it's actually Shirley, Wood Seven City Councilor. I was just on, I'm on the, the call and I just want to go on record as, you know, that we have had neighborhood meetings and that the engineer has made some changes that, you know, the residents had requested. So we have opened up lines of communication between the project and, and the residents. So we just, I just want to go on the record. I apologize. I'm, I'm on my phone and so just Shirley Azak, Wood Seven City Councilor, I'm in favor of the, the, the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Azak. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor?
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I'm talking about the right thing. Is, this is the, the, the building that's, is that the one that's on Earl Street? No. Are we still there? No, we're not there yet.
Is this, is there an, Bill, is there an Earl Street that's part of your network?
If you go back, if you go back to the sheet four, or actually the, the sheet one, Bob, if you just, Rob, if you could put that up, it'll, it'll locate, you know, whoever is calling in for the Butters. I believe she may have spoke up at the neighborhood meeting as well, I believe, if it's the same woman. She lives on Earl Street on the opposite side, on the northerly side of Earl, not on the side of the.
Wendy, if you could give us your full name and address, please, for the record?
Yes. Wendy Bellew, B-E-L-L-E-W-E. I'm on 51 Earl Street. The, I'm here because my aunt can't be here right now. She's at work. So she asked me to, to fill in for her. And we just question on the building that's being built here because there's a lady next door that came over and was, and this is our first meeting with you guys. And, and because the lady next door was saying now, she was very adamant about not having it be built, whatever it is. Cause she said that what's gonna happen is you guys are gonna build like, you know, like some tall, multi-level, low-income housing building that's gonna reach all the way down to Prospect Street and cut down all the trees or something. Like, I don't really know what she was trying to tell us. That's why I came to the meeting and get more information from you guys. Is it an apartment complex or is it a house?
This is a single, single-family residential development, Pam. Single-family residential development.
Okay. So, so it's not gonna be like, there's not gonna be a, a street. The only street that we have that's accessed down the road is gonna be the one that's, like the Earl Street across, that connects to Cross Street, right? It's not, there's not gonna be like a road that's gonna be coming out of nowhere that connects to Prospect Street from Earl Street, right?
No, actually, Bob, if I could answer the woman's question?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, you know, Earl Street is not, we're not, we're not disturbing any access to, we're not proposing any access to, from our division over to Earl Street. And in fact, that's why, one of the reasons we didn't extend Augusta Ave all the way from where it is now to the, to the section where Angela Terrace starts on that first sheet, knowing that we didn't wanna have any effect on the existing houses on those street streets. And, and that's why we had to, we chose to just open up the cross Ave and make that for the circulation. But as I explained to the woman, maybe that was your neighbor as well, but that they're actually on the opposite side of the street than from the division and that there was no impact at all from us. And they are a single-family, hopefully four-bedroom, some, most were, hopefully with a two-car garage. It'd be very, they're gonna be very nice homes. Hopefully be nice colonials and it'll really provide a, a market for, hopefully the economy stays up where it is now.
Nice. Okay. Um, okay. That sounds good. So I, I'm for, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm for it. My, especially my aunt who owns this house, who wanted me to, to also come to a meeting and say that she's also for it. She's agrees or pro the plan. I don't know what the official term is, but we're for it. Build the house.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone else, excuse me, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the project?
Mr. Chairman, there was a comment from a Philip Dacus, I'm sorry, from 172 Augusta Ave Extension. And I believe he is still on, he is unmuted. And if he would like to provide his testimony, we would appreciate that.
Can you bring that page up? Is that possible to bring that location up on the screen, Rob?
Sheet four, Rob.
And I'm not sure where, 172 Augusta is.
170. 170. Is he asking him if he's at the end of the road?
Oh, it is 170 Augusta. He is typing. Phil, if you'd like to speak with us, you can, you're, you are unmuted or you can unmute
Sure. You, are you able to hear the proceedings of the meeting?
Robert, Mr. Chairman, this is Shirley Azak. Actually, Philip came up after the meeting that we had, the Butters meeting a few weeks ago at North Middle School. And his, his comment was that he spoke with Mr. Self and that they came, Mr. Self, the engineer stated that he would put in some sort of a stockade fence be, behind the homes for privacy. So that's, I think he just wanted to go on the record to make sure that, that that was in the, that that was a stipulation there and that they came to an agreement. So, Bill, I don't know, you know, he, he stated that he spoke to you and that was an agreement that you and him came upon. And that's what his comment says in the chat. He did come up to me after the meeting and stated the same thing. So I think he just wants to go on the record, you know, that this was stated.
Did you, did you already address that, Bill?
Yeah, that's what I, I believe that's the individual that I did talk at the, at the end of the meeting. Thank you very much, Shirley. And I, you know, that was one of the concerns. And, and I'm sure that the other neighbors down along probably have the same. That, that it, it would be something that we would propose to put the stockade down along those five houses for the length of that, that back line of their back line and the rear line of the newer lots coming off across Ave up at the top.
We would also be willing to include that as a stipulation to any variance determination by the Board of Appeals.
All right. So noted.
Mr. Chairman, Fred from 158 Augusta would like to speak.
Okay.
Fred, the floor is yours.
He typed the note.
Hello?
Hello, Fred. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Frederick Corman at 158 Augusta Ave Extension. And my house is behind lot seven. And I hear you guys talking about swells and water and everything. But I just wanted to be quite clear that I had never gotten water, we had never gotten water in our basement since we've been here. And what you, what you guys are talking about now is very concerning to me. When you're talking about behind lot seven, which is right behind my house, we are talking about swells and water and drainage and problems and stuff like that. And I'm really concerned about coming home one day after a rainstorm. My house is, the basement is flooded. I do have, my basement is a livable basement. We do have furniture. We have TVs and everything down there, AC units. And, and that's what I'm concerned about. And I don't know how you guys, if this was to happen, it would be man-made. And I don't understand, and how would that affect me? And how would I be able to replace this, have to come to, to get it fixed?
All right. Well, we, Bill, for the record, is that, is this gentleman on plot?
I'm at 158.
It's plot 11, Bob.
Plot 11.
Augusta.
37.
On map 37, plot 11? Okay. Well, I mean, you can explain it, Bill, but obviously the purpose of establishing the swale is to intercept any sheet flow that's heading his way. In a nutshell, that's what you're doing.
Sheet 5D is, is a clearer picture of that lot seven, Bob.
That's what I'm hoping to.
Phil, if you'd like me to jump in?
Please, try, yeah.
Hey, Todd Pelling, the engineer that did the drainage layout for this. So what we're putting in behind these houses is a, we, we call it a swale. Another word for it is a channel or a ditch. We, we call it a swale because it's gonna be a grass-lined. But we're digging down approximately two feet down from the existing grade in order to catch the, any, intercept any water that's flowing off of the backs of these lots of the new houses and diverting it into our drainage system. So no water will be going over the property line into these properties on Augusta Ave Extension.
Okay. So you guys, what you guys gonna do with the drainage? Are you gonna widen the drainage or because there's gonna be even more water once you do that, right?
No, this is just an interceptor trench that's gonna take the water that's running across the surface and divert it into our drainage basin that's a few hundred feet down Augusta Ave from you.
Okay.
Down to where the end of, the pavement ends on Augusta Ave, that's approximately where the drainage basin is gonna be. So we're taking any water that would normally head toward your property and we're sending it all down into that drainage basin.
And you guys sure 100% this is gonna work?
It would be almost impossible for water that is running across the ground to jump up a two foot.
Oh, I, I don't know. I mean, things happen, you know?
Yep. So it, that's why we're cutting into the ground like two feet. We're not just making a little three-inch swale here that's gonna get filled up with grass and overflow. We're making something two feet deep that can catch any water. And even if there's leaves in there or the grass stops growing, and trees grow in it, it can still channel the water away.
And another thing I have during this, the process of digging up the rodents, are you guys gonna be putting down for the rodents, the rats and stuff like that during this period of construction?
Where, where are they, where is there a pest problem, sir? Where have you recognized a pest problem?
No, there's no pest problem now. But I'm saying, once you start digging up the dirt, once, once trees and stuff coming down, I'm pretty sure there's, there's rodents back there. I don't know.
Well.
Doesn't that happen though, when you're in construction?
I mean, you, you're gonna get, I mean, you're gonna get swirls or maybe small, small, small animals that are gonna be displaced, but they, they'll relocate in the wild somewhere. They always do.
Yeah. No, well, I'm just talking about rats. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, that's why I asked the question. Do you recognize the rat problem there? Is there a problem?
No, not at the moment, no.
If I could jump in, Bob?
Of course.
You know, we're not.
Please. Uh, you know, when I, in, in any construction site, it's hard to predict what would happen with uh, anything that's in natural state. But we, we, we're thinking this, this, to be rats, uh, I don't see anything that would supply food for rats. Normally they'll, you'll see those, they're more around, you know, garbage bins or trash barrels, things like that. But what, what we're disturbing is uh, you might see some, a couple of coyotes run by your house. Uh, we, they've been running by me out there, so I don't know, we don't anticipate, but you know, you know, any situation arises, we'll be taking care of whatever, whatever's needed, certainly by the contractors that are doing the work. Or it can certainly be addressed and the gentleman can, can time, contact the board of health and to be able to contact the, the contractor and the owner and the board, whatever, whatever, you know, if there, if there becomes some kind of a problem, I don't anticipate it. There's nothing else there to, to feed that community of rodents that we see.
Okay.
Does that, does that address your concerns?
Well, I'm not saying I'm for it and I'm not against it either, but I might.
It doesn't have to be, we appreciate your concerns.
But I'm just, I'm just concerned about my neighborhood, that's all, where I live.
Yeah, we appreciate your input. Um, was that, is that complete your, was that complete your question, sir?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to the project?
This is Denise Cahill. I would like to ask a few questions.
Please, yeah, identify yourself, Denise Cahill. What's your location, please?
Uh, Denise Cahill at one forty-eight Augusta Ave Extension.
Could you bring that sheet up, Rob, please?
I'm writing, it's just right. On map thirty-seven, plot ten.
Sheet four, Rob.
D four?
Sheet uh, four, just sheet four.
Go to sheet four. Talk amongst yourselves.
Well, but before, while he's doing that, I would just like to take this time to uh, thank Mr. May and the planning department, the Mr. Chairman, the board members, taking the time and letting us um, ask these questions. I think it's that this is the process and that we're allowed to do this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Cahill, what's your lot and plot number?
It is map thirty-seven, plot ten.
Right next door, okay.
Yep.
Right here.
Just um, for clarification, right, the subdivision rules and regulations say that the road should not be longer than seven hundred feet. How long is this road? Could someone?
Uh, I think you addressed that already, Bill.
Yeah, the, the extension, the dead end st- extension would be about eight hundred and seventy-four point six feet.
Okay, so approximately a hundred and seventy-four feet longer than what the rules allow.
But Rob, actually the, the roadway itself, that distance is from Cross Ave that, that ties on to the existing Cross Ave, so that's actually from across Augusta Ave. We, we, we show that as the street coming up, so it's, it's closer to probably, probably uh, it's probably seven, seven, just very close to seven hundred feet.
But you have asked for a waiver from that, correct?
Yes, he has.
Yeah, you've asked for a waiver. You listed that as one of your waivers.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, um, my next one is in the rules and regs, right, it says that, it talks about trees. Um, and that tree is six inches over in diameter, measuring four feet above the finished ground level should be preserved. And then in the O and M plan, it also states that they're supposed to be delineated. The existing trees to remain should be clearly delineated. Will that be happening prior to construction?
Um, he has the right to wait, ask, that's another regulation that he has the right to wait. What is the, what is the, so what is the minimum tree size that needs to be located on the plan? Is it eight inch diameter?
The rules and regulations say six inches.
Six inches, sir.
Yeah.
Measured four feet from a ground, from ground level. And that's also in your, well, your O and M plan, right, states that they're supposed to be delineated before the trees that are to be saved are to be delineated.
Wow.
So is that a no, that that will not be happening?
Well, that's up to the applicant. He has the right to, he has the right to ask that, for a waiver of that. Is it really densely wooded there, Bill?
There's, there's portions of it, again, it looks like it's been basically a construction site for, for sixty years. It's, it's more piles of, of, there's piles of loom, piles of dirt, you know, there's
I would have to disagree with you, sir.
Trees, it looks like it was probably all treated at one time. Again, any of the native trees that are out there, the larger trees that we can save, they're probably gonna be mostly on the outskirts of the lots for, you know, for buffers on the outsides, but uh,
Did you, did you have a particular concern relative to the trees, ma'am?
Yeah, I just don't want them taken down. They don't have to be.
Well, generally in construction, I mean, there's gonna be tree disturbance, there's gonna be tree disturbance for the roadway, there's gonna be tree disturbance.
No, I, I understand that.
For each, for each home site, um, I guess that's up to the contract, because we don't have, to my knowledge, a regulation that says that we have to maintain a certain percentage of the original trees. I mean, I'm
No, no, I did not see where you added keep percentage, that's correct.
Yep.
But I would, I, I mean, I've been in this house for twenty-two years and as far as like a construction site, this has been no activity out behind me in twenty-two years. So it's not, you know, sand, dirt, whatever, has not been dumped there recently. It's been there for twenty-two years. And probably longer.
You have a, I mean, not that you need to disclose one at this time. Uh, Mr. McCloskey, do you have a developer in mind for the project? Is it, is that something that we could, you're concerned that we could pass on to the developer?
Uh, I know there have been some interested parties, uh, really, the, 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 the question is for any developer is what's gonna be allowed? What are, what are gonna be the restrictions? Obviously that, you know, plays into the cost of any, of, of anything. I, I will tell you, um, I have a client who has developed several properties uh, very successfully in Brockton over the years, is well received by the city and, and does what he says he's to do. I don't think I'm liberty, where it's so preliminary, I don't, I don't think I should.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
Thank you. Um, the grass swale, which we've really talked about at length, um, I've kinda heard the conversation go back and forth. There will be an easement created for that? Is that what I was hearing?
Yes, there's an easement that's shown on the plan, a thirty foot wide as required by the city.
Right. And that easement will be put into these lots as a swain, a drain swale easement?
Yes, that's the, as shown on the plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, you talk about it being their backyards. I've been around enough construction that people tend to use the drainage swale for their dumping grounds for their leaves and their grass clippings and we've all seen it. So, yeah, just to make sure that that easement is on the property so they know that they cannot do that. That would be appreciated. The, uh, another variance, the sidewalks, the rules and regs require an eight foot sidewalk and you're asking for a five foot? Is that correct?
I don't believe we ask for, we, we require a five foot wide sidewalk both sides.
I believe it's five foot, Bob, with three foot grass strip in, in some cases. But it's a, it's a, it's a five foot sidewalk.
The actual walk is five feet both sides. You're gonna wave what? You're waving one sidewalk, Bill?
Uh, in actuality, look at, we, we know that uh, it's, we're asking for, you know, really especially through the Board of Appeals. Uh, we certainly didn't, we didn't minimize uh, uh, what we're gonna build for the road. We expect that to, we expect it to be a very, uh, very nice subdivision if they build a ni- nice homes like they have been building in the city. Uh, we proposed sidewalks both sides. Uh, if you'll notice that we have lotting uh, that would need access from both sides, so uh, in this particular case, uh, to allow for sidewalk on the other side, I think is a small cost, overall cost uh, to, you know, if the boards uh, find that they'd allow us to have, you know, you know, the, the X number of lots that we're asking for. So we don't, we're not anticipating any waivers for, you know, roadway construction as far as limits and, and things like that. Granite curb sidewalks, they're all proposed.
Alright, thank you. Any other concerns, Ms. Cahill?
Yes, I'm just getting started. Um, they are looking for a, uh, for a variance for the drainage, right, which I did a rough calculation that forty-six percent roughly approximate, right, approximates forty-six percent of their drainage less than the required four foot coverage.
You could address that, please? You've got some proposed drainage that has less than minimum cover?
Approximately forty-eight percent of it.
Todd, if you could address that.
Todd is muted?
Yep, sorry.
Did you hear that comment, Todd?
I did. Um, so the limitations that we have out here, we're trying to tie into the existing drainage system with our overflows and uh, it I didn't think it was quite forty-six percent, but um, the areas that we were needing the waivers from is in order to keep the pipes up off the bottom of the basin when they enter our big drainage basin so that the, when the basin starts filling with water, that it doesn't start surcharging the pipes and going back up into the drainage system. These basins, we're trying to keep them as shallow as we possibly can and as we came down the hill, we generally did okay with them. But as we get closer to the drainage basin, again, we wanted to stay above grade. I'm, I'm scanning through the plans now, trying to see what areas we're talking about. I think the other one is at the intersection of Augusta and Cross Ave where, again, we're trying to fit some existing drainage structures and existing roadway grades and get them into our drainage basin and still have it function and overflow into the drainage system. So that was the reason for it. But we are using the, the heavier pipe which can withstand lower cover over the pipe.
Yeah, using heavier grade, heavier grade pipe. How much, how much short or deficient, how, how much on average, if there is an average, how deficient, how much deficient are you with the minimum cover, Todd?
Uh, I'm scanning through now. Um, I think I, I think it was like three feet is what we were at. Um, I think there was like maybe one drain line that was less. I, I'd have to, um, I'm gonna need a few minutes to figure that out, but um,
That's alright, I just didn't know.
Looks like the lowest one here looks like about three feet.
But the most important thing is that the, is that the, for the, for the class of pipe that you, that you design, uh, the analysis, the load analysis for that is adequate for what you as you can show, you can show calculations, or you've shown uh, design standards that uh, comply with your, with the cover that you're providing?
Yeah, well, the, the, the regular concrete drain pipe that's in most towns, three feet of cover is what's needed. Brockton requires the extra foot of cover over their pipe, so um, I'm pretty sure, I'm, I'm, again, I'm checking through now. Um, I know there are also the engineer, the city engineer had commented on some of this stuff too, so.
Yeah, if I can intervene here, Bob, I, I think most of all the drainage is three and a half feet cover. I think it was just a couple of lines, Todd, wasn't it, that down near the intersection, what we're tying in the, in the existing? Uh, we were, we were actually bringing up the existing grade of the uh, Augusta Ave a little bit to, to give us that cover. But that's where you, the heavier pipes would go, the more reinforced. I think overall, would, you know, we had a minimum of at least a three, uh, three and a half feet.
With a heavier class pipe. Alright, uh, I, I have a comment, Ms. Cahill?
Yes, please, thank you. Um, street trees. Right, per the rules and regs, they're supposed to be in the grass strip and if you look at the plans, there is a detail for the street trees, but if you look at the cross, the street cross section and the sidewalk cross section does not show the street trees. And if you look at the plans, the street trees are showed on the property, the personal property. And I'm just wanna kinda double check on that, cause if the trees go on people's personal property, they have the right to cut those down. Where if they're in the easement. If they do, they're not supposed to.
Are you, are you going, so is it your proposal um, to, to add the street trees as part, you said you're gonna follow, you know, the regulation?
Yeah, most, as you say, as you see on the, on the plans, you can see that we're, we're trying to, you know, keep them back at least three or four feet from the sidewalk. All the years, you know, trees, a lot of people, you know, we plant the trees, but then six, seven, eight, ten years, they start ripping up your sidewalk. So, uh, we planted them, uh, you know, back a little bit. Uh, what we could do, Bob, uh, I'm, I'm sure we need to come back to the planning board for final review after Board of Appeals. Uh, what we could do for the, even for the Board of Appeals, we could, we could show a ten foot tree easement uh, along both sides. That's really our intent is to, is to keep those in there.
A lot of times utility companies, especially electrical, ask for an easement there too, so we can make it a tree planting and utility easement or whatever, so.
Yeah. And she said you, you, you need to show, you just need to show a typical tree on your cross section or something?
Well, there's a typical section there, normally you're just uh,
Yeah, the trees don't show up on that, but we can add it to it. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Will you, will you add the ten foot tree easement on the plan also?
If you, if you notice on sheet eleven, Bob, the detail sheet, we show the uh, you know, the typical deciduous treat uh, tree planting detail.
You do?
Basically, that's what we're trying to, you know, we'll accomplish that. Again, we, a lot of them, they'll put them right up next to the back edge of the sidewalk and it doesn't take long uh, for them to start tearing up the backs of the sidewalks, you know, through root expansion.
It's very true.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, and I need a little help with this also in that I do believe, I thought per your specs, that the required frontage is a hundred and seventy-five feet.
Required what, I'm sorry?
Is a hundred and seventy-five feet?
The frontage.
Correct, okay, yep.
And when Mr. Self was speaking, has, have they already gone to the zoning board? Has he already got it approved as a hundred and twenty-five? Did I?
No, I believe his next step is to the zoning board.
Okay, so given that, right, again, through my calculations, I don't show one lot that meets the zoning board requirements.
He, he's going to, he's gonna go to the zoning board of appeals with his client and they're going to ask relief from zoning, the zoning requirements as needed. He's gonna, that's his next step. That's his right to do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do have, I have questions where the existing Augusta Ave extension meets like the wooded area that it appears that that wooded area will, like where Cross Ave, um, what am I trying to say?
The intersection of Augusta and Cross.
Thank you. Yes, Augusta and Cross Ave. The portion like the, the, where the private meets the public?
Uh, what page would that be?
Probably sheet five, five C, Bob.
No, it's not really shown on five C either.
It doesn't show very well
No.
on five C.
She said where the public meets the private. Are you talking Augusta Ave?
Yes.
Where Augusta stops.
Alright. You look at sheet five, uh, it's actually five A and five B. If you look at five B, I believe, at the very end, Rob. You look at sheet five, uh, it's actually five A and five B, if you look at five B, I believe, at the very end, Rob. See that, if you look at Augusta Rav, uh, down right at the bottom where the swale come out, came out. Uh, go up. You can see that one, it stops here, Augusta Rav is public. Yeah, where it goes out, I believe it's Angela Terrace.
Yes.
From, from that point, that's where it, uh, it's, it's been accepted from that's, that point. Out to the back of the propping lines over at Earl Street as a public by the city. From that point, all the way out, Augusta Rav to Prospect Street, it's a private way.
So, my question is, that is currently a wooded area.
Correct.
Will that area be cleared?
No, nothing, again, one of the reasons we, we didn't, uh, we didn't, uh, you know, tie the two in. Uh, is that we wanted to leave that, we didn't want that being a thoroughfare from Prospect to be able to come down to Angela. Uh, I think it's Kasari and one other street there. Uh, we, we purposely, that's what we recommended, that we open up Cross Ave. Uh, then it would just be right through the intersection straight for the Cross Ave extension people to get the cross, cross street. To be able to go north and easterly without having to go all the way down to Prospect and come back up to Cross and then turning northerly on Cross from Prospect, so. Now, from there to the intersection, that's already paved now that you know. Uh, on the ground, there is not to be any disturbance other than just, uh, you know, a, a small gravel, uh, a ten foot gravel. Uh, path around the detention area for maintenance.
Okay, thank you, so none of that area will be disturbed?
Correct. There'll be some grading in it, but it, it'll be minimal grading just to, uh, to meet the, what you see in the plan. But there, there's, there's not gonna be a, uh, an effort, there's, there'll be no through traffic, either pedestrian or, or, uh, or vehicle. Certainly no vehicle traffic. It'll be remained, it'll, it'll remain the woods.
Well, if I may just add to that, we are tying in from that grass swale, a drain pipe into the drain manhole there, so we are gonna have to be doing some construction to tie in the overflow.
Right, right.
Right, just construction.
Well, and I thought, I thought I saw a plan that had the contractor's laydown area was in that spot.
Well, that's a, that's a temporary, that's a temporary, uh, under the erosion control. And that's a temporary space, you know, uh, right near where the, the house on lot three would be built. But it's, it's part of the rig, uh, as part of the, uh, so as the part of the erosion control. That's where all the construction trailer would be parked, uh, check in, there'd be a small parking, gravel parking area. Uh, once that, once the project is completed, that'll be removed and, and uh, it'll be, you know, turned back into a lawn probably and or, you know, some plantings in there. But it's a, it's a temporary situation under the erosion control.
Okay, thank you. I, I think this question was answered early as far as the, with construction vehicles entering and exiting the site. You had talked about leaving the guardrail up on Cross Ave extension across Ave, so I assume coming in from Prospect Street.
Yes, that, that's correct, that, that was under the recommendation of the original review for the Deputy Chief, Fire Chief. And we, we certainly wanted to, uh, we agree in a hot percent that during the construction phasing until the houses were, were built and starting to be sold on Augusta Rav, that. There, it would remain closed, basically to allow the infrastructure for the, the street Cross Ave extension up to the cul-de-sac to be built. That's where you get most of your heavy, you know, truck, uh, you know, traffic and bring in material and take out material for, for building that road, that part of the roadway, so. All those vehicles will be, uh, under the construction phase, will be sent out to Prospect Street.
Did you have anything else on Ms. Cahill?
You tell me, um, I assume this would be from Mr. Pilling, what is, what was the di- design criteria for the infiltration basin? On twelve year storm, what?
Oh, um, yeah, we designed for a hundred year storm.
Hundred years? Thank you.
That's required by the Brockton regulations.
That's what, just asking.
And Mrs. Cahill, I just wanna say you've been very thorough with your review of these plans.
Thank you, that's my job. Um, but make sure you're on your toes. Has any, has there ever been discussions about a fence around the basin? To prevent somebody from. On previous projects I've been on, they've been required to put a fence to prevent children from possibly falling into a basin, that might.
If I can, uh, if I can jump in there, Bob.
Go ahead.
What, what happens, that, if you looked at the basin on, uh, on sheet five B, uh, Bob. You'll, you'll notice that these thing, these basins are designed to really only. Hold back water on a, on a, a certain rainstorm event. They, they fill up according to that type of an event. But in all actuality, they're designed to end up to drain free. So that, you know, there's, there'll, it'll be a grass, it, that's actually gonna be a grass basin. Uh, it'll be mowed, it'll be planted grass, you know, seed will be planted in there. It's only in a certain rainstorm events that it's designed to hold back the water coming off the street drainage. And allow it to, to fill up there, so it doesn't overtax any drain that's coming into the existing drain pipes that are in Augusta Rav. So it's, it's, even though it's a, it's a, it's a, it may appear it to be a hole in the ground, it's designed for temporary storage of, uh, of water.
Can I jump in for just a second, Mrs. Hammond? That is something that, uh, it is in our regulations for some strange reason, that we have, uh, six foot fencing around these places and, um. Uh, basically, the, the fences then prevent the areas from being maintained. And we, what we're building are, are prisons for water. Um, and, you know, it, it catches garbage and, and all sorts of things. Because these are retention ponds. Our detention ponds are not retention ponds, pardon me for that. Um, the water does drain out almost within hours after the storm. And, um, there's not going to be large amounts of ponding that could become, uh, problems for, um, both. But, uh, i- if you look, um, all of our natural ponds across the city, um, don't have any fencing around them. And, um, we don't seem to have problems with, um, uh, children in those ponds. So, what I would, in the future, I would like the board to take a look at those design guidelines. Um, to remove that requirement.
That's a good idea, you, you're gonna find that most communities now have done away with fencing of detention, detention retention basins. That's, it's become the thing of the past.
Okay, thank you. And, um, the basin itself, I, I've talked about this a year ago when we were at the meeting. Does the city maintain the basin at the time of completion, project completion?
Can I answer that? Maybe. Um, we have a new stormwater ordinance. Um, and we are waiting for some guidance from the city engineer and the, um, Director of Public Works. To discuss how that operates. It's my understanding that in the future, the stormwater systems are going to become managed by the city. Uh, right now, most of the stormwater systems are, are managed by homeowners associations or worse, are left to neglect. Uh, and just kind of abandoned, so, um, we will have to get back to you on that. If we don't maintain it, then it certainly would be a homeowners association. But right now, it looks like the, through the stormwater ordinance, that the city would be taking over some responsibility. But we will know more when we come back as a definitive subdivision, so. There's gonna be another. Public hearing at the planning board, um, where we can have an answer for that, I hope.
Okay, thank you. And just, just, I just wanna reiterate what Fred and Joanna had expressed, right? I've been in here for twenty-two years and I have had water in my basement three times. And that's when the whole city was flooded, so. I just want that on record, right, that I don't have a water problem at this house.
Very good.
And thank you all for your time, um, will we be notified when this goes to the zoning board?
If you're within the radius of notice, um, I think they're also, they also advertise in the, in the newspaper, I don't know if you get the enterprise, but. If you're within the radius of notice, you'll get it, you'll get a legal notice in the news.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, okay, is there anybody else?
She received this notification. She would have, she'll receive the zoning notification, is she read the actual notification from Bill?
Yes, okay, I just, I wasn't sure if they had to send out about his notifications.
Yeah, they will, they will.
Same list.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to go on record with comments? Very good, um, well, we, you, let's see, you've heard the, I guess you've heard the, the comments of the, uh, the engineering department, you know, of the, uh. Planning department, you've heard the comments, um. Of the abutis and so forth, so there's a couple of things, a little housekeeping things you've gotta do there, I think you said you was gonna meet, you were gonna, uh, meet with Chiqui. And then, uh.
Yeah, if I can, uh, answer that, Bob, yeah, what, what, uh, hopefully that, if Chiqui, I'd like to, you know, get ahold of Chiqui and see if he has any other concerns over and above what we had the original. And I'll certainly address all those when we come back, uh, hopefully be successful with the Board of Appeals. Uh, that any of their concerns we could incorporate, but more importantly, I'll make sure that Chiqui, I meet with Chiqui and make sure we, uh, address any of his. Uh, concerns either, either now or in the future coming up.
Did you wanna, did you wanna resolve that issue of the, because again, that was his request for the additional ten foot wide, uh, easement, maintenance easement there, did you wanna resolve that first?
Well, yeah, well, that's one of the issues where I'll discuss with him, uh, and, and again, you can, you can see by the plans that. It's, it's, we don't consider these really as a drainage swale per se, it's more of an, just a, uh, you know. Just an avenue of making sure that, uh, we can intercept water that's over, coming over, over, uh, overland to the abutting properties. The, the only structure that would need maintenance, really certainly, are gonna be down at the outfall. And or, you know, ten, twenty, thirty feet from that, which is easily accessible, uh, from the road that's already proposed around the detention, uh, retention basin. And that, that's something I'll sit down and go over with Chiqui and, you know, and just, uh, see what his thoughts are on that. Again, you know, we're gonna, you know, hopefully we'll be able to come back in front of the board. Uh, so all of those, all of those comments and all those notes will be incorporated, hopefully we'll, uh, we'll have all the, you know, any, any, any points now and future of all answered in that return.
So is this the plan that's before us tonight, for clarity, is this a definitive subdivision or preliminary?
Well, you know, we're actually, uh, because we were, we were kinda caught in the switch, uh, from Board of Appeals first into the planning board. So we were always used to go into the Board of Appeals first and then incorporating that, those input into the final definitive plans.
Right.
Even though our, our plans, we try to be as thorough as possible to answer all questions on both boards. But we're, we're, we're tossed up as far as the procedure, uh, you know, we've just switched into whatever the city has mandated, you know, we go through. Uh, so it's, it's whatever we can, it, whatever the board wants to interpret it as, I believe. Uh, we'd like to be able to get its blessing, go to the Board of Appeals, you know, we still need to, you know, apply under the, under the Board of, under the variance. Uh, variances we request for the Board of Appeals.
It was applied as, it was filed as a definitive.
Yes.
Okay, but, but in that case, is, is, has been the planning board's rule, if there's changes to the plan, that's why, that's why I'm asking for clarification on that question. If there's, if there's necessary things that have gotta be changed on the plan. And we, we, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. May, do we need to see any changes or revisions on the plan prior to. Acting on the plan, we've gotten, we've gotten a little jammed by doing that before.
I, I think that the Chiqui engineering issues need to be worked out and, and it would make sense to, um.
Continue?
Continue, but I, I think that. We have enough here that they can proceed to the zoning board of appeals. The engineering, the engineering issues, the easement issues are, are, shouldn't hold up to ZBA decision.
I agree, so I like that, if that's, if that's allows them an avenue to, to proceed. Then we could, what we could do is we could give a recommendation to go forward to the zoning board. And yet, but yet not give a definitive approval because there's other two small, I mean, we've covered a lot of ground. Uh, there's a lot of things that have been ironed out, which is, which is good for everybody, but you can see there's a few loose ends there, so if that's. If I'm, if I'm on the right, uh, um, thought process here, if we can.
I, I would like to nail those loose ends down before you have a final, final approval.
As would I, we've gotten into.
I say continue this.
Just come back to bite us, so, but.
But allow them to go to zoning.
Can we give them a, a, uh, we can certainly give them a recommendation to go forward to the zoning board, can't we?
Yes.
With certainly with what they've got here, this is, all we're down to now is housekeeping issues.
I think you can do that, it's, it's, is there, I don't think there's any sort of rule etched in stone as to what's actually required to go to the Board of Appeals, other than we. Come to the planning board, I think it's sort of been decided it's a preliminary, but, but I think a letter to the board would suffice.
I make a motion to, um, continue with a positive recommendation to ZBA. I like your wording.
A second, I'm.
All right, so we've got a, we've got a motion to continue the definitive, definitive subdivision hearing with the planning board. And, and at the same time, there's been a recommendation, a motion to advance to the applicant. A, 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 an endorsement to go to the zoning board of appeals. Are we, are we good with that recommendation, with that, with that, uh, motion?
When do you wanna continue to?
When would you like to continue to sub, the definitive subdivision hearing?
Well, if I could answer, uh, Bob, it, would it be, would it be best, uh, best interest all around, we'd like to go to the Board of Appeals. When you say that we continued, we, we know, we, we just always anticipated coming back. Uh, before there was any approval under the, under the definitive subdivision.
I say three months.
Action. Could we come back, uh, three, three months from the Board of Appeals?
About three, about three months, Phil.
Yeah, I think January would be good.
January is recommended, January, that's fine with us.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it depend on the length that we, we, we begin, uh, going through the Board of Appeals, which is, that's, 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 that's fine with us, whatever the board, uh, uh, recommends, that's good.
All right, so can you incorporate that, I guess you can incorporate that into the, into the motion, was there, was there a second on the motion?
I believe it was from Reggie.
Reggie, Reggie, okay, second for Reggie, okay, so if there's no other discussion, Pam, are we good?
Uh, Mr. McCluskey.
Yes, ma'am.
You for a letter freezing the time clock through January, I understand through this whole COVID thing, we're technically frozen anyway. However, uh.
We would waive, uh.
Law office likes us to just get that in writing.
Yep. We'll waive.
Would you waive it in an email to me?
John, I'll, uh, I'll, uh, I'll have the form, I'll, uh, I'll fill it out and send it to you and, uh, we'll have Freddie sign it, and yes, Pam, it'll be in your desk.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, if there's no, if we're, I guess if we're all good and there's no other commentary, uh, roll call by vote, Craig Peanut.
Yes.
Reggie Thomas.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez.
Yes.
Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Bob Piladi is a yes. So it looks like you're on, onto the zoning board of appeals.
Well, we wanna thank the board very much, uh, and all the input that we got as well, so.
Yes, thank you very much, much appreciated.
And thank you for a, a very thorough, um, set of plans and a very thorough, uh, presentation on, on the, uh, on the subdivision. It's not an easy subdivision, it's, it has, it has its complications, so thank you for your input.
I, I also think that, uh, Ms. Cahill has a, uh, a future in site planning as well.
I was, I, I, I don't know, do we have any openings on the planning board?
That was thorough, it's all get out.
Yeah. Well.
Very, very impressed.
Yes.
Thanks, good night.
Okay, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Board members.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, and planning board members, the last, the last two, the last two are generated as we, as we have said, seven, 678 East Street has been continued and Lot Two Belgravia has been continued. So, Mr. May, you were about to say something.
Oh, I was going to say, don't, don't, the board members don't hang up until you guys move to adjourn, please.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
Wait a minute, is there any, is there any other, Pam, any other business? You don't have any, any administrative stuff?
Um, there is one plan on my desk that needs signature, it's an old subdivision plan, really old, that wasn't signed, so if you guys can stop in, that's it.
Is it, is it, what'd you say, is it a definitive subdivision or is it E and R?
The definitive subdivision.
How many signatures?
From a year ago. Remember that one where the house was like two inches to the lot line?
Oh my God, that's, oh God.
All right, so you need signatures, I got it, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn, second.
I second it. See you tomorrow, Pam.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you all for participating, everyone have a good night.
See you tomorrow.
Bye.